Michelle Shu, Judy Newman, and myself, Maya Rabasa. Please join Superintendent Dai as he leads us in the flag sweep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the liberty which stands on my shoulders under God, and the citizens with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Superintendent Dai. Now I will read the land acknowledgement. The Eugene School Board would like to acknowledge that our institution sits on the homelands of the Kalahua people. In the treaties of 1851 and 1854 to 1855, and the subsequent forced removals of many Indian people from western Oregon, some of the Kalahua were moved to the Grand Ronn Reservation and some were moved to the Syllatz Reservation. It is important to note that all of Lane County was and continues to be an important trading and gathering area for cannabis and other resources. During the Restoration Era from 1977 to 1989, Lane County was designated as the service area for the Confederated Tribes of Coos, Lower Unqua and Sayuswa Indians, the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronn Indians, the Confederated Tribes of Syllatz Indians, the Coquill Indian Tribe, and the Cow Creek Band of Unqua Indians. Eugene School District 4J acknowledges that the descendants of original and service area inhabitants of this land are still here today. They are thriving members of our schools and our communities. Countless members of other tribes now also call our community and schools their homes. We wish to thank those original stewards of this land. We as fellow stewards of this land wish to remember that we need to take good care of this land and take good care of all the members of our school district community. First up on our meeting agenda for tonight is an agenda review. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections to the agenda anyone would like to request? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. So we move on to the introduction of guests and the superintendent's report. Superintendent Dai, you have the floor.
Thank you Chair Rabasa, members of the board and community and everyone in the listening and visiting audience. Nice to see you here in person. I'll keep my comments focused as we have a lot to celebrate this evening and a lot of work to do. Much work has occurred since we have returned from winter break. Staff and students alike have renewed their focus on teaching and learning. Just this last Friday, I had the pleasure of attending a fantastic celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. hosted by the North Eugene High School Black Student Union. Really exciting event. Thanks to everybody who put that on. I was moved by the thoughtful event that showcased the talent and audacious joy as NAACP President Miles Pendleton tied it. Our creative students and staff shared impactful personal statements, clips of history from Dr. King's life, and celebrated with joyous music and dance of the African drummers and dancers Wushishi Ghi. Very hopeful that I said that accurately. This weekend continued with an opportunity to join together as a community in honoring the life of Dr. King in the first in-person march in three years. As we gathered in front of Autzen Stadium, I was struck by the group of individuals in attendance. I'm reminded both of the importance of supporting one another and of coming together as a community to truly understand individual struggles and find impactful ways to amplify all voices. To quote Dr. King, "Volunteering is the ultimate exercise in democracy." You vote in elections once a year, but when you volunteer, you vote every day about the kind of community you want to live in. To that end, it's my pleasure to thank a key group of volunteers for their work on behalf of students, staff, and the greater Eugene community, our school board. January is School Board Appreciation Month, where we pause to acknowledge the great gift of time and energy that this volunteer school board gives to our district. This is not easy work and not work in which we always agree, but I definitely appreciate the endless hours of time that people give to the young people of this community, including my own. With deep appreciation, I will now share a formal proclamation on behalf of our district. Where a school board creates a vision for what students should know and be able to do, where school boards establish clear standards for student performance, where school boards ensure that student assessments are tied to establish standards and desired learning outcomes, where school boards are accountable to the community for operating schools that support student achievement and well-being, where school boards align school district resources to ensure that students meet those standards, where school boards create a climate that supports the philosophy that all children can learn at high levels, where school boards build collaborative relationships built on trust, teamwork, and shared accountability, and where school boards are committed to continuous education and training on issues related to students and their well-being. Now therefore, I hereby declare our appreciation to the members of the Eugene School Board District 4J and proclaim the month of January to be School Board Recognition Month. With that, I will close and look forward to celebrating the achievements of our students later this evening. Thank you very much.
Well, my understanding is that we're moving right on into the recognition of the students, so that later portion can be fixed.
How about that? Every year at the end of one of our seasons, we take the time to celebrate just a few of the accomplishments that our students have enjoyed over the course of the first third of the year. It would be impossible if we'd be here all night long to celebrate all of the amazing things that have happened, but we do have the opportunity this evening to celebrate a few. And so I'm looking forward to that. Shira, would you mind coming up?
Hello. Eugene School Board members, support staff, Dr. Dai. This is so fun. I get to do a really good thing. We have a lot of district music students who through an audition process were selected for special groups and were shepherded by their teachers and recorded by their teachers. And not all of them could be here this evening, but we're going to recognize all of the names and bring up everybody that we can. And I am told that you are encouraged to take any pictures that you'd like to take. So the first group of students that I want to acknowledge are the students that went to the Western International Band Clinic Honor Band. And if any of them are here, just come right on up. Lynn Blomberg played clarinet in the honor band. This band was held in Seattle and--
Leon Blomberg. Leon, the name is--
I am sorry, Leon. And we'll fix your certificate on that too. And Leon's teacher, Chris Mudd, at Churchill High School, couldn't be here because he's attending a rehearsal himself right now. So Leon, nice to see you. Thank you. All right. Karik Ed, a trumpet player, also served in this band. This is a Sheldon student. Imogen Herron, clarinet player from Sheldon. There's a lot of them, but we do appreciate your enthusiasm. Marcus Ko, a clarinet player for Sheldon. Michael Rooney, who plays the euphonium. Asher Rowland, clarinet player from Sheldon. Luke Ziderkopf, trombone. Colton Scott, French horn from Sheldon High School. And their band director Julie Downs is here in our room. Now, do we want them to stay up here as we bring up all the others?
If we can have a group photo and board members, if you would like to join for a group photo and if we could come out here a little bit. Darren? Superintendent, if you could join the group?
This last weekend was indeed a very busy weekend in that this was the All-State Conference, the Oregon Music Educators Association All-State Conference. And we have several different All-State Honor Groups that we had students selected for. I'm going to start with the Elementary Honor Choir. And I was able to see their amazing concert that they did after a really hard day of work. They were fabulous. And we have students recognized. And if you're here and you're one of these students, come right on up. From Guan Vista Elementary School, Silas Fowler. Also from Guan Vista, Talia Sisneros. Another Guan Vista student, Chris Hewer. And Zeta Knight, also from Guan Vista. Selena Montero. And Kaden Saldan. We're not ready for pictures yet until there's another school to recognize, but all of these students are students of Stephen Johnson. The next group of students comes from Edgewood Elementary and all served in the All-State Elementary Honor Choir. Kate Arera. And you see, some of them are wearing the T-shirts that they wore when they performed for us. Corbin Maslin. Cora Powell. Phoenix Martin. Lucy Rowland. Anaseca Wesley, all from Edgewood Elementary. The Edgewood students are students of Melissa Nixon. Now, we could do the Elementary Honor Choir as a picture or we could do all of the All-State together.
All of the All-State.
Okay, then I'm moving on to the Middle School Orchestra. These students are all from Roosevelt Middle School, which is indeed the only middle school that has a full orchestra program. But the leadership that these students showed when they-- the only middle school in 4J that has a full orchestra program. The leadership that these students showed in this All-State group-- and All-State is really All-State. They were playing with students from all over the state. Was really something. I'm not sure that any of these students are here actually, but it was-- they do know that this is happening and they were trying to get the Zoom link, so I think they might be watching. They are all students of Carrandor for-- John Harms on the cello. Ella Lee, also on the cello. Eva Kovacevic, violin. Amelie Way, violin. Nina Cool, also violin. Oh, thanks. Caprice Roca, served as principal second, so led the second violins. And then the concert master for the All-State Middle School Orchestra was Asher Lewis from Roosevelt Middle. We had two students from Sheldon High School who participated in the All-State Tenor Bass Choir. They are Aiden Jagels. And Omar Nishawi. And I know at least one of them had a piano lesson that they had to attend. They are students of Megan Purdue at Sheldon. There were a number of students that participated in the High School Symphony Orchestra from South Eugene High School. Daniel Wong on viola. Malaya Lockwood on violin. Morgan Osburn on violin. Alicia Sroka on violin. Nina Sibek on violin. And Summer Yen on violin. And this will bring us to the end of the All-State, folks. The High School Wind Ensemble had two participants from 4J. Kwan Kim from South Eugene High School. And Colton Scott from Sheldon. Kwan is a student of Kim Melby and Colton is a student of Julie Downs. So let's come together for an All-State photo. The honor question we can hang out to. We've got to pass some certificates out here if we want to do individual shots with the superintendent shaking hands. Or things. And then if we could have the elementary kids in the front in just a minute.
All right, good job on that one. Congratulations.
And we have one last thing to celebrate. The last thing that students were selected for is something that is yet to happen and this will be happening in Bellevue, Washington, next month. And that is the All-Northwest Music Honor Groups. And this draws students from Montana and Oregon and Idaho and Washington and Alaska. So some of these are students you've actually already seen, but this is an extension and extra work and extra commitment for these students to do this as well. In the Wind Ensemble for All-Northwest, Kwan Kim on clarinet and Colton Scott on horn. And the All-Northwest High School Orchestra, Morgan Osburn. Alicia Sroka. Nina Sibek. Sabine Holker. And Summer Yen. These are all students of Carrandor.
All right, one, two, three. Congratulations.
And I got to be the person on the mic because I am the part-time K-12 teacher on special assignment that gets to help with music things around the district. And it is an honor to be part of this. I'm Shira Finkley. And congratulations to all the students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shira, and thank you to all of you for showing up. All right, everyone. So now we'll move on to the next thing, but before I do, I'm just going to point out that our typical practice at board meetings is to do the American Sign Language version of applauding. But when you have greatness like that for a while to celebrate, it's not appropriate to not just root in all our things. So yes, but if we move back into our typical practice, that would be helpful. The next item on our agenda is the Network Charter School Public Hearings. We have a public hearing coming up on the Network Charter School Charter Review. Individual speakers have signed up to speak and are limited to three minutes. They cannot give their time to another speaker. A timekeeper will show a sign when the speaker has 30 seconds left and when their time is up. That is noted on the blue sky box up there on the Zoom screen. Before Debbie calls the next person for record keeping, just note that we also have board member Laurel overwork now in attendance. So Debbie, I'll pass it off to you to welcome our speakers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speaker tonight is Pandora Ritter Bennett and Ashley will be followed by Stella Wayman. So, and you're about to step up.
I'd like to speak to you.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Pandora Ritter Bennett. I'm here speaking on behalf of Network Charter School. I've only been in attendance at Network during this past year, school year, but it's really been an amazing experience being there and I really enjoy it. There's so many great opportunities with the different classes that they give. Their culinary program is something that I was very interested in and I was able to attend it during each trimester. Which is something that I was very grateful for. Also, the credit recovery program is something that is greatly used by many students, I think now, coming out of the COVID years, especially with being online. I think there was a lot of difficulty with students losing credit and I think that the program that they offer is a really great opportunity for students to regain credit that they lost during that time. And I personally take a lot of value in that. I really appreciate the staff and environment that they have built up their school. I think that it's a really amazing environment to grow in. They really offer so much help in just calm space, really. Everywhere we turn, there's just an adult available to help you out with any problem that you have. There's students there who are able to also help if needed. Everywhere we turn, there's just a new friend in me and people there to support you and to grow into who you want. There's so many different choices that they offer with just being who you are and expressing yourself in different ways. The clubs and after-school opportunities that they have. Gaming club, D&amp;D, just things that really help connect the students in their own interests. And I think that's something that is really appreciated among the students and staff. I really do enjoy going to this school more than any other that I've ever attended. I think that it's a really amazing opportunity for students to be able to go here and I'm really thankful to have it available to me. I had a lot of struggles when going to online and in person and I haven't faced any difficulties among the ones that I have faced in the past when going here. I've been able to be flexible with planning assignments and getting things done in different opportunities and ways that wasn't really available to do before. And I'm really grateful for that. I have a lot of anxiety, as you may see. I'm stuttering and nervous. But it's just been a really calming environment and it just, I haven't felt nervous there.
Thank you, Pandora. Next up is Stella Wayman. And all the speakers tonight sat there and pretended to be person. Okay. It appears that Stella's not here, so Chris Patterson.
Thank you for this opportunity to be able to talk to you about Network Charter School and why so many of us really want this school to continue and for the charter to be reviewed. I've been part of the school because of my own children for 11 years now. 11 years ago, I had a son who is on the autistic spectrum who was failing out of school. I mean, he literally, when it was seventh grade year, he failed every single class, even gym. He was doing that well and school was leaving him behind. We looked at and tried a few different things until we found Network Charter School and it gave him the opportunity to become something more than than what he was looking to do. And so now, as a 27-year-old man, he's got a full-time job. He pays his rent for his own place that he lives in. He's living a better life because of the skills and the things that-- maybe not the nicest way, but I call this school, it's the island of misfit toys. It's the kids that might have fallen through the cracks. That's the way I see my kids here. And because this school and my own children going there gave me the opportunity to become a parent member of the school board. And when my kids graduated, I let them know I wasn't ready to leave the school yet because it made such an impact on my family's life that I had to stay part of it. So now I am a PD member of the board. It is such an amazing thing to see with these kids and the things that we can do and watch children who-- we just had somebody saying, "I'm stuttering and having problems." Watching them flourish and grow in ways that they never thought that they could. Which is why I seriously see this one as my family. You know, the teachers, the kids, I look at all of them as just an extension of my own family. Especially, throw another thing on why the school is so important to me. My youngest child, who was a member of the school, we lost him five years ago in a car accident that the entire family was in. The school, along with my membership in the Chamber of Commerce and those things, all these groups came together to surround my family as we went through that pain and that grief. So even after my kids weren't students there anymore, the school let us know we were still part of that family, whether or not I currently have children. whether or not I currently have children there. And what it gives to these kids is something that I think needs to, you know, not just hold on for a few years, but if I could get this school to just stay there forever, I would, because of what it brings to the community. I mean, I live up in Oak Ridge area now, and I'm still taking what time I can to come down to give to these kids. So, thank you for the time, just to tell you what this school means to so many of us.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Next up to speak is Nathan Ditch.
Hello, my name is Nathan Ditch, and I'm here to talk about Network Charter School and some of my experiences with this. Throughout my first years of school, I was still at a public school, and I switched to Network Charter very end of my ninth grade year. Before I switched, I felt lost, confused, anxious all the time during school. And, um, and during the year of middle of high school that I once, I had struggled with work and doing social. And after finishing that year, I'd gotten no credits and had no idea how to catch up. But then I started with Network Charter, and things felt better. I started with zero high school credits, and now I'm managing nearly all my credits. I have, I mean, it would catch up due to the better work environments, and they have this after-school credit recovery program. It allows you to make up credits without, like, doing your typical essay at all times. And I just enjoy the better structure that helps me with my problems that are going to get driven from, like, average in a positive kind of school. And I think that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Mr. Ditch. Next speaker is Suzanne Ditch.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Ditch. I am Nathan's mom. As he said, he, uh, if he was struggling from seventh, eighth, ninth grade, he was one of those quiet kids, always through the cracks, not being reached. And literally, ninth grade, he got zero credits and finally switched to Network. In Network, they have this outdoor credit recovery adventure program. The kids call it O-Craft. They love that. And he, within weeks of joining, was doing some of these things and coming out of his shell in a slow way, but steady. As he said, he's got nearly all his credits. If he keeps going like he's doing, he's gonna graduate early. He's making plans, he's learning skills, he's enjoying the culinary program, hanging out with friends, just doing amazing. And all the kids there, these are kids that fall through the cracks in regular school. These are the kids that need this environment. If you were to try and get these kids back in the regular school, you would find that the majority of them would not be passing high school. We need Network Charter.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jack Wrights, followed by Dan Wrights.
When I transitioned from elementary to middle school, I started on high grades. Just down with this, and I couldn't keep up with the first. I failed almost entirely, except on tests, I was learning. But I couldn't do all the busy work. I couldn't keep up with it. So I failed. It's like a year I failed. And then I failed it, and I started doing better on online classes. Like, still failed. Then I joined Network Charter School on my ninth grade year, and I all of a sudden started doing better. Instead of failing literally all of my classes, I passed six out of the nine classes that I, I passed all of, all of my classes. And I got A's in six. Which was night and day for me, was previously experienced. I was very nervous to start in person classes because I had had some issues only in my middle school. But I have yet to experience anything even close to that. Everyone has been incredibly supportive and so unbelievably kind, accepting of every role. Now, I do concede I did fail over two classes in my freshman's all four years. But this kind of helped me find the appropriate recovery mission, which has been absolutely incredible. And I am now ahead in credits, which is something I never even imagined. It's just been some of the most informative, well-planned, and just groundbreaking experiences I've ever had in my entire life. This school's been absolutely life-changing for me, and these years, these three years that I've been going to Network Charter School have been the best years of my life. And just the community in this school is absolutely incredible. And I would absolutely be failing at regular public school.
Please be Dan Wrights.
Good evening. My name is Dan Wrights. I'm a local small business owner and a father to three pretty awesome kids. All three of my kids have attended four-day schools. I would describe my oldest child as a gifted artist and a typical student. She never struggled in school when graduated early. My son and youngest daughter, however, very different students. My son especially struggled greatly in elementary and throughout middle school with ADHD. We were supposed to be guys for him. Unfortunately, up to that point, because his parents and as the school community, we were failing him. In the late spring of 2020, my wife and I were getting ready to see him scrape out a promotion from the eighth grade to high school. We were dreading sending him to Sheldon because we knew that struggle was going to continue. I can't tell you the exact moment I found out about this little school-off limits treatment. I can tell you the feeling of relief and hope was life-altering. My wife and I were told this school had a culinary program, gardening class, outdoor education opportunities, and teaches a curriculum to students in a way that some kids really need to learn it. This school didn't believe in homework because they had an amazing staff that could help my son be successful in class. I'm finding that three years later, my wife and I had every reason to be excited. From the first week my son Jack was at Network Charter School, I could see a change in him. There was a light in him I hadn't seen in years. He was finally excited about school and getting to cook, you know, telling us, he's just excited to be all the wonderful things he got to create in class. We nervously watched as he left us to embark on outdoor adventures with his classmates on the O-Craft program. I had no idea if he actually needed the credit at that time or just because he was at the outdoor style of learning. He has gone to have adventures from the Oregon coast to Mount Hood to the Redwood Forest in California, to Newberry Crater and Bend, and countless places in between. My son has learned more about our state's history and its natural beauty in the last three years than I have in my total forty-seven. I got the opportunity to drive a group of these kids down to the Redwood Forest for the finale of the National Parks Class the last spring. They spent the better part of a week hiking, camping, and worrying about themselves and the awesome world around them. I was also able to be there when they ended their thirty-eight mile adventure. They were all so proud of their accomplishments and thankful for the end of the trail meal. I'm looking forward to my youngest daughter to have similar adventures as she learns much like her brother does. I can, I can only imagine when I was a kid, having teachers like this saying, "Hey, guys, we're gonna learn about volcanoes today." Get me a hawk. And that's the, that's the opportunity that these kids have, and I hope you guys hope that continues for longer.
Thank you, Mr. Wrights. Next speaker is Ethan Peever.
Hello, I'm Ethan Peever. I'm a math teacher at Network Charter School. So I run the whole gambit of tattoo wear, same thing I've been doing for nine years. I started my adventure in the network community as a student. Um, I think the most poignant example that I can give of the powerful community that Network creates is my own example as a student there. I found myself at Network when I was fourteen as a agreement I made with my mom. I wanted to drop out of school and get my GED. I never struggled academically. I was like, Jack, ace test, but still was doing homework. And so I wanted to drop out of my GED, but mom told me to go, was try Network. And, you know, I walked in there and I fell in love. It was the first place that I discovered that I actually enjoyed learning and that it was good to learn, and it was the first place I had teachers who cared about me. And so, you know, in my time there, I discovered community, and I discovered my love of learning, and that is the wave that I rode to go to Lane, to go to U of L after that and pursue a STEM degree. I got a math degree, a pure math degree. And I don't think that I would have had the option, the tools, or the ability of self-advocacy if I hadn't gone to Network. Yeah, and so, you know, I owe a lot to my, of what I have now in my life, to that community that I learned there. And, like Chris, I've tried to leave a couple of times, you know, like, uh, graduate, it's be done, but then I came back and I was like, hey, can I volunteer in O's Math? And they're like, hey, you wanna be a IA instead? And so, I've been there, and I was like, oh, I'm gonna graduate college and then get a big fancy math job, and I tried to leave, and I was like, ooh, what if I just came back and taught math instead? I don't wanna go there. I love it here. And so I've been there. You know, community is a powerful place, and it builds family, and it builds love, and it builds learning, and that's not something that you find everywhere in the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peever. Heather Hickox, she's our next speaker.
Hello. So I am a teacher and a consultant at Network Charter School, and I know our amazing students' strengths and the barriers to learning. Some of the students come to NCS performing at up to nine grade levels below their peers. I work closely with students, teachers, educational assistants, and administration to create a supportive and positive learning experience, while also working diligently to increase their skills in these core subjects. Through creative scaffolding, focused support, and access systems of technology, these students are accessing the same curriculum as their peers and showing their learning abilities and speak to their strengths. NCS is a school designed to support all students and has a disproportionately high number of students with disabilities. On average, my case, we're ranging between thirty-two and thirty-eight students in a school of a hundred and fifteen. That equals to twenty-eight to thirty-three percent of the students of the school, and times has been as high as forty-four. On average, a regular four-day high school has between eight and thirteen percent of their population marked as students with disabilities. We are a full-inclusion school. That means all of our students are in the general ed program, and they're learning with their neurochemical peers and all of the peers at the school. As was mentioned in the last meeting, when you look at NCS through the lens of PBIS support period, we are predominantly a tier-three school, with over ninety percent of our student population coming to our school needing tier-three support. The work that teachers and administrators do to support these students is immense, and every success achieved is celebrated. Many sped students and families come to Network really from trauma they endured in other learning environments. At NCS, we work hard to make sure that the students and families that join our community are seen and heard. We build relationships that inform and guide how we support individual students in their goals. NCS highlights transition planning for students, and I work closely with Denise and DeBlossco and Nick Moore to create individualized post-secondary planning and preparation for NCS students. We focus on all possible post-secondary goals from career, college, job, foreign apprenticeships. Denise and I have also created O-Craft, the Outdoor Credit Recovery Adventure Program, and our special education students participate at that program at a rate of twenty-eight to forty percent for each trip. They are fully included in all of these programs. And these learning opportunities will stay with them long after they have finished their high school experience. And our O-Craft program is immensely grateful for the community's support so far in our GoFundMe, and we are hopeful to reach our goal to ensure this program continues with additional donations from our larger community. In short, NCS supports students with disabilities in staggering high numbers compared to other public schools. And we are doing so in a full-inclusion, trauma-informed, transition-focused, forward-thinking, and uniquely positioned program that is absolutely changing the outcomes for the students who walk through our doors and into our community. We are shifting the discussion around what learning can look like for students who have been ostracized while learning, and reflecting back to them their valued gifts and unique and needed contributions of what they like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wrights. Yes, we have two more speakers, Carney Rogers, and she'll be followed by Matthew Bligh.
Okay. Thank you so much for having me here today. I'm gonna talk about Network's robust community and community-centered culinary program. A lot has happened with the culinary program since I started my teaching stint at Network eight years ago as a culinary arts instructor. As many of you are aware, on a daily basis, our program operates in Louisville cafeteria, meaning Monday through Friday, and we feed the entire school breakfast and lunch. We get some money from the government to do this, but we also use, for, but for it to be sustainable, we also rely heavily on donations from our local food bank, providing the students and the kitchen with allotted local and organic products, as well as basic staples which are massively helpful because we make everything from scratch. Years ago, I had a student volunteer help me design our lunch menu. They wanted a menu that highlights different cultures, their cuisines, and food ways. And ever since then, each week, we honor and celebrate food from different parts of the world. I can say that with great certainty that this is a totally unique program that gives students an opportunity to build confidence and resilience while feeding their peer. You may be surprised, but my students do way more than just make breakfast and lunch. Because of the dedication and passions, passion of my students, we've taken home multiple second-place awards from Chef's Night Out, a local food competition where we completely compete against Eugene's Best Restaurants. Yes, you've heard that correctly. We compete against Eugene's Best Restaurants. I'm talking King of State, Marche, to name a few. So, we also provide three massive feasts to approximately two hundred family members of our students three times a year. The advanced culinary class completely plans each feast. I'm lucky to say that it's hard now for me to keep track of the students of mine who have gone on to have successful careers in the culinary arts industry. Not only are students of Network doing incredible things, but I've done quite a bit to make the program as robust as it is. I've turned the elective credit program into a certified career and technical education program, which means greater connectedness to our culinary arts and restaurant industry and other high school culinary programs, alignment with the Lane County College Culinary Program, as well as going back to school to get my Miret in education, to get my CTE teaching license. With help of the Laney S.D. and fellow CTE culinary teachers, I envisioned and started a culinary showcase that brings together the majority of the high school CTE culinary programs of Lane County for a day of friendly and fun competition, something we have not had in Lane County for years. I want to end by saying that not only is Network currently creating resilient, compassionate, driven, caring, and awesome individuals, it always has. I'd like to say that I'm a testament to that. We graduated from Network I'd like to say that I'm a testament to that. I graduated from Network in two thousand and six. Oh, Steve Talkers, you can tell. I wanna see the captain's on that one.
Thank you. Denise, Matthew Palladi here? That's your last speaker, Ms. Roger.
My name is Matthew Palladi. I teach middle, high school math, physics, astronomy, climate change, and coding at Network Charter School. And I serve on the NCS Board of Directors. Next week, I will celebrate one, one full year in the network community. It has been an exhausting and occasionally frustrating year, yet there's no place I'd rather be each day. The reason? Our students. Our students are bright, unique, creative, individual, and different. They've experienced trauma and are full of anxiety. They have been failed by the public school system, often been bullied by their peers, and have fallen through the cracks academically. By the time they get to Network, they are convinced that they don't belong anywhere and are incapable of learning anything. To fully reach their potential, they need more time, more attention, and a different approach to learning than the traditional schools are able to give. We make the time at Network. We give the attention at Network. And we approach learning differently at Network. We show the students that they belong to a community, the Network Community, that embraces them for who they are. We show the students that they are capable of learning. How? Maybe it's our free onsite mental health services, our prescriptive approach to discipline, or our smaller class sizes that allows more individualized attention. Or perhaps it's our unique class experiences. Students can learn all things art through our partnership with Mecca. Experience the outdoors in our yurt in the Altenberg Park, excuse me, with nearby nature. Learn mindfulness at Heartwise, or cook breakfast and lunch for our entire school with the culinary program. Personally, I have been working to combine math and science concepts with other course offerings. Last trimester, Denise Velasco and I co-developed and co-taught a math and social studies course based on the Strives for Social Justice app. Our students learned about the history of Black people in Oregon and specifically Lane County with Denise. In the math portion, we examined data illustrating racial gaps to build algebraic models to learn about wealth generation, housing, poverty, and government representation. Every two weeks, we use the app as our guide to explore locations and landmarks dedicated to Black history in Eugene. The class was very successful with multiple students commenting that math can actually be fun. Currently, Denise and I are teaching a similar course we developed on Oregon indigenous people. And next trimester, we are planning a health and biomechanics course centered on how the body functions. I'm looking forward to teaching that class. I've enjoyed hearing about the experience of other teachers, parents, and students of Network tonight. But I am most excited to hear from our students. It takes a lot of courage for each of them to stand up and speak their truth. I'm very proud of them all. After all, they are what keep me up at night and what get me out of bed in the morning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes our speaker's floor. Chad.
Thank you, all of you. Um, we look forward to coming for decision shortly in the meeting. Um, next, however, moving on to student reports, uh, from our student board representatives. Um, I welcome you all to volunteer to go first, and if not, I'm happy to call on you. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Emily Shaver. Um, I'm from Churchill High School. Um, thank you for having me here. Um, first, I just want to say thank you to everyone from Network Charter who came out this evening. Um, it takes a lot of courage to say that for what you believe in, especially to all the students that share. It's really important. Um, uh, to start the evening off, I just wanted to speak on a new targeting policy that's been implemented at Churchill. Um, and it's my understanding also South Eugene. Um, so it states that for each class, you may have up to three targetings. And on the fourth targeting, the office will be notified and there will be a call home and you will begin academic recovery time. Um, it's essentially lunch detention, but, um, so I asked a few questions. I poked you on a little bit. And my understanding is the teacher's job to track all those targetings, um, up to the fourth one. And this kind of seems to me like unnecessary work for teachers who already have a lot on their plates. Um, and if you don't get me wrong, I'm also being in class, being present, and learning and, you know, putting in procedures to make that happen. But, um, I'm having a difficult time seeing how this will be helping teachers. Um, next. Um, so recently at Churchill, I know a lot of students have been making use of resources from our school-based health center and HOOTS from the Lightyear Club. They come to our school. Um, I think this is a great mental health and physical health resource. And, you know, I urge more people in our schools to have access to that to take advantage of it. And I think we should promote that more. I mean, I didn't know about my school-based health center just until recently this year. Um, I think every school should eventually be having a school-based health center to help their students. Um, right now, I wanna say at Churchill, people are kind of indifferent. They show up and they go home. It's kind of like that mid-year slump, the January, January feeling. And, I mean, especially coming off of COVID, I mean, it's crazy to say that it's been three years, but it's still difficult for people to come back to everything from doing that thing. And I think it's also adding one to my last heart. It's great that we're offering those mental health resources to students at this time. Um, so I'm just hoping in the next few months, the spark can return to our student body and our students can find some excitement in school. Um, we have our Martin Luther King Junior Assembly coming up this Friday, which should be fun. Um, our Climate Action Club is hosting a clothing swap with the Four J Climate Justice Team. Uh, later on next month, we're hosting a winter formal dance and accompanying Spirit Week. And our lifestyle program at Churchill, which is one of the largest in Four J, is thriving. And they are planning on putting on another unified basketball game in the coming months. Um, these are all really exciting things to look forward to. Um, thank you for having me here tonight. That's all I have.
Thank you, Emily. Parker, I see your light. You ready to go?
Sure.
Great.
Um, my name's Parker Anderson. Thank you for having me here as well. I'd also like to start with thanking the Network Charter School for their comments. And I think it's really amazing the community that seems to be there. And that it's really amazing when you have a community like that, where you have like, where you have enough of a bond and this amazing like group that you have past students who want to come back and volunteer and be a part of it. And it's a success of a school that we don't see very often, that you have this overwhelming support from the people who leave. And I think it's a really cool thing to have and it's important to recognize that. Um, at North, we had our Martin Luther King Junior Assembly last Friday. And it went very well and we had student comments from our Blacks and Union, including a student poem that was very moving. And that it was a celebration, I think, the entire student body enjoyed. And I think similarly to what Emily said, it's just, it's pretty quiet over at North, where it's just people telling and people leaving at the end of the day. And it's that January, like quietness, that slump of there's not much going on at the moment. I think the most that we've heard recently is when the new schedule was announced for next year with the ABC days. There was a lot of confusion among the student body about what exactly that meant. Specifically, the mention C days, that felt very vague on what exactly would happen on those days compared to the AB days and what the overall benefits and purpose were to this schedule as opposed to the current schedules that are in place. Um, and then I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Parker. Chaz?
Hello, everyone. I am a student representative from Sheldon High School. As a whole, this year, our students have been invested in promoting diversity in our school's culture. Uh, we hosted a Latinx Heritage Month celebration and posted information on the TV slides and announcements for LGBT History Month, the GSA Gay Presentation at the Missus's Week. Um, later this week, we have our Martin Luther King Junior Assembly planned. It'll be an assembly in a blue box taking, taking place here in an extended fourth period to allow students to more fully interact with the material. And this was made possible by the efforts of our Black Student Union. Um, this week, we also have the introduction of our Mind Body Divergence Alliance to create a community for neurodivergent and body diverse students. Our No Place for Hate Campaign began regularly beginning in the beginning of our first campaign. We will also be partnering with Churchill to host, um, Unified Basketball Days. Um, this year, our leadership class holds a priority to make our assemblies more inclusive of all students in our student body with the creative placing a greater emphasis on recognizing student achievements as well as student groups and clubs within these facilities. We've hosted numerous successful initiatives this year, such as our Food Drive, which restored our food pantry and allowed recruit baskets to be sent to forty-five families, as well as our partnership with Toys for Tots, which allowed Sheldon High School to be a distribution center that was able to serve around two hundred and fifty families this year. We hope to continue this partnership with Toys for Tots again in the future. Finally, to match children's growth over the past few years, we have had some facility improvements allowing for new programs in our school. Primarily, the conversion of an old wrestling room into a classroom, which allowed for our new forestry, uh, CTE program to begin.
Thank you, Chaz. Um, I'm not sure if we have any folks on line. Ren is here, is up.
Also go.
Jasmine and Ren, yeah. Is, is Ren wanting to come up and share with us?
She said she wants.
Jasmine, do you wanna start while we queue up Ren to go after you?
Sure.
Great, thank you, Jasmine.
Hello, my name is Jasmine. Um, I am a student representative of South Eugene High School. Um, first, I'd like to give an update on upcoming and current events that are happening at South. Um, right after the first week of coming back from school, uh, or back to school from winter break, uh, South Eugene admin has been focusing on tracking students tardiness. And students have been facing the consequence of, uh, attending detention during lunch, as you, um, heard from Emily at Churchill. Um, I've been hearing a lot of students suggesting that there should be a different solution, uh, for punishment regarding tardiness. Um, because a lot of students have responsibilities, uh, to attend to during lunch, uh, which include fish finishing up tests, um, leading clubs, um, and even like teacher's office hours. Um, and yeah, so also another issue, um, with the new policy is the lack of consideration, uh, for students that cannot help but be tardy because they have classes at the opposite end of the school. Um, I personally have a class in the eye chest hall, um, after lunch. And, um, I eat lunch in like the classics wing of the school. So it's, I do have to leave my lunch earlier in order to get to my class on time, um, and not face a tardy um, and potentially face detention, uh, later on in the future. Um, aside from the new tardy policy at South Eugene, um, South Eugene Student Government has been working to launch our, uh, winter formal, um, on January twenty-eighth at the Kids Sports Center. Um, we are planning to do a clothing drive as well, um, that South Eugene has been hosting, or South Eugene, uh, Student Government has been hosting, um, so that there will be free formal wear available for students, um, before the dance. Um, and we're also incorporating the South Eugene Fort Catering, uh, who will be providing a lot of food at the event, um, as well as the art club for our photo booth, uh, backdrop. Um, additionally, as affinity groups are preparing for the MLK Assembly, which is gonna happen in February, um, I was hoping that there would be more assemblies than just the one assembly that happens once a year. Uh, the MLK Assembly, uh, that celebrates unity, encourages activism, um, and even education against racism. Um, I just wish that there were more than one assembly, um, that encourages a celebration of multiple cultures. Um, for example, Asian, uh, Native American, and Latinx culture. Um, yeah. And then another thing that I wanted to touch on, uh, was the availability for mental health resources at South Eugene this year. Um, this includes, uh, availability for students to use the HOOTS program, uh, in, starting this month. Um, I'd also like to say that although there has been an increase in mental health resources this year, there isn't enough communication about these resources. And students aren't able to use these resources because they are not made aware of them, which kind of defeats the purpose of having the resources in the first place if they're not made accessible enough, um, through communication. Um, but participating in the South Eugene Town Hall meetings, I've noticed that students receive communication best uh, through flyers posted around the school and also social media. Um, yeah, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Jasmine. Um, Ren, we can't see you on my screen, but are you ready to go?
Yes.
Great.
All right. Um, my voice is gonna be shaky, so my apologies beforehand. Uh, um, I'm Ren Washington. I'm the student representative on the school board for the students at the Eugene Online Academy. And I'm going to talk about how school affects mental health and vice versa. It's hard balancing school and your mental health because it adds a lot of stress. A lot of students try their best to juggle through the two, but they constantly collide with one another. And if that's not taxing enough, most students have their jobs, health issues, or disabilities to worry about, as well as helping with family issues. Meaning not only do they have to prepare for themselves before their siblings too, and that can be draining. Um, we focus so much on school that it starts to stress us out and cause burnout. So we end up putting work to a stop, which only worsens our mental health. We're stuck between doing the work and just trying to get better. And both are equally important, but it doesn't feel like our health in general is because the focus is always back on school. It's like a game of tug-of-war and school is always the winner while our mental health is sinking into the mud. I've created a student survey because I'm interested in what my peers have to say and I'm curious about any issues they might be interested in talking about. And I'm hoping this will help a few students get their voices out and know that their thoughts are cared about. That's all.
Thank you, Ren. Um, I believe that's everyone who is in attendance. Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. We've been anxiously waiting for this date to come and you did not fail to, um, please us. Thank you. We feel better informed and, uh, I know we were all taking notes, so we were looking forward to hearing more from you, but also incorporating your feedback into the work that we do as a board and the district does, um, as well. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is items raised by the audience. The school board receives written comments by email at board@fourj.lane.edu and sets a tag, a set time in each regular board meeting to hear public comment. Community members can sign up to speak to the board by submitting their request online at fourj.lane.edu backslash board, backslash public comment, or contact the superintendent's office. The deadline is the Monday before each meeting. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes and cannot give their time to another speaker. A timer will count up indicating when three minutes have been reached. Our expectation for meeting decorum is that comments will be respectful and free of profanity and derogatory language. Speakers may offer objective comments or criticism about district operations and programs. For complaints about individuals, the district has a board policy and complaint process. Please contact the superintendent's office at five four one seven nine zero seven seven zero seven. Please contact the superintendent's office at five four one seven nine zero seven seven zero seven for more information about submitting a formal complaint. Tonight, we have six speakers, if I'm not mistaken, and Debbie will begin introducing our first speaker.
Thank you, Board Chair. Actually, one went through, so we have five. We'll start with Larry Lewin, followed by Marion Malcolm, and all our speakers are on line time. So Larry, if you're ready, go ahead.
Thank you, board members and Superintendent Andy. Your hard work for our community, especially this week of school board appreciation. Larry Lewin, former Language Arts TOSA, now member of Cape Community Alliance for Public Education. With all the issues facing you, I understand that not everyone can be a front burner issue, but I'm asking the same question again about the great success last summer school was for our students and teachers. Four J wisely decided that repeating the customary summer school offerings would not be wise in the context of a return from the COVID restrictions. Instead, last spring, the district hired teachers to design new courses built on creativity, passion, and engagement to inspire students to want to go to summer school and to enjoy learning. By all accounts, it was a stunning success. A high school student I know raved about earning credit and skills in a first aid class that included reading, writing, discussing, and hands-on learning. Are we considering taking what was learned by this experiment and asking what could be, what should be evaluated for the regular school year? If it worked with students during the summer term, would it, could it also work during fall and winter and spring terms? You have the data right here in-house to make the determination. Who in the district is evaluating it? Who can answer my question? Secondly, and relatedly, I am very interested in any discussion of expanding tutoring to students in need of academic support. With the lifting of the volunteer restrictions in our schools, is anyone in the district working on developing a team of tutors who could come into the schools or meet with students online after school to provide critical one-on-one or small group instruction? The data on tutoring is very strong. I know two retired Four J teachers, one who tutors locally out of her home, and one who tutors nationally online, who could be excellent resources for Four J's point person on this matter. Who should I ask to get in touch with? Thank you for considering.
Thank you, Mr. Lewin. Our next speaker is Marion Malcolm.
Who is to speak now?
Marion Malcolm, is that you?
I can't hear who.
Marion Malcolm is the next speaker. Is that you?
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Day. I understand that the district is developing a multi-year plan to allocate the integrated funds and that stakeholder input is part of that process. And I'm imagining that you have a structured way of securing that stakeholder input, but I'm speaking as an individual stakeholder tonight. I'm a former teacher, a community educator, the mother of a Four J teacher, and grandmother of Four J students at two grade levels. I pay a lot of attention to our schools and care a lot about educational equity. One big concern for all of us that has been spoken to this evening is the mental and emotional well-being of Four J students and staff. We need more services and staff directly addressing those needs. I submit, though, that a really important way to address those needs is to ensure that the school culture allows for human relationships among colleagues and between students and staff. Every student needs to be seen and heard as a whole person, as I think we understood this evening happens at Network Charter. Every staff member deserves to be able to relate to our students. This, I think, means allocating significant funds to a reduction in class size is essential, along with making sure that educational assistance are available in classrooms so that the teacher is not the only adult in the room in a position to deal with student needs and conduct. With smaller classes and more staff, teachers could actually teach not just curriculum, but students, the young human beings in their classrooms, and nothing could be more important than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our speaker is Casey Timon.
Hello, can you hear me? All right. Esteemed Four J school board members, my name is Casey Timon. I'm a school counselor at Churchill High School. I've been an educator in Four J for twenty-five years. On behalf of the Oregon Educators for Climate Education in collaboration with EEA Human and Civil Rights Committee, I'd like to take a moment this school board appreciation month to recognize the work that you all are doing. It's no secret that this is an extremely challenging time to be doing the work you do as public servants. You join every week publicly, and we can see, we see the challenges that you face, and we see you return to the table every time with courage and conviction. We honor this work and we honor you. We want to recognize that within all the volatility of our climate, this board has repeatedly shown itself to persevere when it comes to working for what is best for children. Perhaps nowhere is this more relevant than in ways this board has faced the issues of global climate crisis and sustainability. We want to highlight the board's 2019 Resolution for Climate Change Action and thank this board for their continued leadership in advocating for climate change education and legislation. We ask the board to continue its critical leadership in this area and offer to collaborate with you in any way. We are grateful to live in a community where this focus is collectively understood and where courageous action is supported. Current legislation is moving to our state congress that calls for climate change to be engaged in schools as part of the highest ideals of democratic education. This legislation was largely generated locally by Four J teachers who could not do their work without your support. For all that you're doing and for your commitment to the future, we thank you most humbly this school board appreciation month. Sincerely, Oregon Educators for Climate Education and EEA Human and Civil Rights Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timon. Next to speak is Sherry Shapers. We actually don't see Sherry Shapers in the audience online, so we will move to Harry Sanger.
So, good evening, Four J Board Superintendent Di. In honor of the school board recognition, I'd like to thank you all for your service to the community. I would also like to start in honor of MLK Day with a quote that "A man dies when he refuses to stand up for that which is right. A man dies when he refuses to stand up for justice. A man dies when he refuses to take a stand for that which is true." So I ask you to please listen to those standing up, even if their passion does not resonate with you now, it may down the road. You may miss important opportunities to learn and collaborate if you dismiss ideas without thoughtful consideration and open dialogue. The pandemic exacerbated an us-versus-them mentality with little room for discussion and community participation. As the fallout continues to snowball, now is a good time to reflect on the impact of decisions made without an adequate public forum, or local control was too easily ceded to less transparent lead agencies. Looking back, do you still believe it was appropriate to take the decision-making out of the hands of parents? If this is, is this the role of the school board, or should you be engaging with the community and listening to families who stand up? More and more parents are reaching out and organizing because they feel like their parental rights are being taken away. This feeling existed before the pandemic, but remote learning unveiled instruction that shocked many parents. The shift in bias to remove equality in the name of equity that by its very nature makes us less equal and more divided. The creepy creep of inherently sexual gender discussions with every younger students. The prevalence of technology and pervasiveness of social media, the lack of community involvement. All of these factors have created a new epidemic that won't be addressed until we can communicate with each other with respect, without bullying, setting a positive mental health example through effective leadership. Thank you.
And that concludes our speakers for the evening.
Thank you, everybody from the community who took time to share their thoughts of us. Next on the agenda, we have comments by employee groups. We are hanging from EEA tonight, so whenever you're ready.
Thanks, Maya. Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Di. My name is Sabrina Gordon, and I am president of the Eugene Education Association. Since this is school board appreciation month, I want to use my time tonight to express genuine gratitude for the work of this board. Over the past year and a half, some of the impactful work you have accomplished that is appreciated by educators includes beginning to bring teacher librarians back into our elementary schools, supporting students and staff who observe religious holidays other than those accommodated by the school pillar, support for restorative justice initiative brought by OSEA, supporting and approving historic contract agreements for both licensed and classified staff, including an eighteen dollar an hour minimum for our classified colleagues, insistence on examination of time and resources spent on standardized tests, as well as free speech rights for educators talking with parents about these tests, creating the availability of sexual assault counselors in our schools, a new racial harassment policy, creating collaboration with community partners, and elevation of student voice on this board, on the Equity Committee, and elsewhere. This is by no means an exhaustive list. You each volunteer your time to do difficult and extremely important work. And this work is only accomplished through listening, questioning, bravery, perseverance, and willingness to take action. Thank you for digging in and sticking with these critical efforts, and for the impacts felt by students, families, and staff who rely on you. You probably know me well enough by now to realize that I won't miss an opportunity to make a request. As budgeting season approaches, including consideration of the district's plans for the integrated funds from ODE, such as the student investment account, I encourage you to continue your practice of listening, questioning, bravery, perseverance, and willingness to take action. There are opportunities appreciated for you to ask questions, such as what is more important for our students, librarians or testing coordinators? And how are our budget decisions impacting climate sustainability? And are we doing enough to address the class sizes and mental health supports that our students need? While the educators of the EA haven't agreed with every decision you've ever made, we do recognize the careful thought that this board puts into your work, and we appreciate it greatly. EEA looks forward to partnering with you in the months and years ahead. Thank you for your school board for your leadership.
Thanks, Sabrina. Debbie, are we hearing from Seth tonight as well?
Yes, we are, and he should be in the queue.
Good evening, Board Chair Abassa, school board members, Superintendent Di, and everyone in the listening audience tonight. My name is Seth Bafflin, and I'm the president of MAPS. I want to thank all board members tonight for dedicating so much time and energy to our district. We appreciate it. MAPS is our Four J employee group that represents our Four J managers, administrators, professionals, and supervisors. Tonight, I am very pleased to introduce a MAPS special guest speaker, Adith Gomez Navarrete. Adith is here tonight to represent our Equity Department, and her work is one of our regional Equity Managers. I am so proud of Four J for creating our Equity Department and for hiring talented staff like Adith and her peers. Adith joined our MAPS board this fall, and I've had the honor of working with her on both the MAPS board and in her Equity work in the Churchill region. She is a rising star in our district, and without further ado, I'm handing this over to Adith.
Right, can you hear me? Board Chair Abassa, school board members, Superintendent Di, and everyone in the listening audience. My name is Adith Gomez Navarrete. I started off in the Four J School District as a student and had my K-12 experience here. Then I came back to serve my community as a Spanish dual-language elementary school teacher. Eventually, I had the opportunity to become a teacher mentor TOSA and now get to serve our community on a larger scale as an Equity Manager for the Churchill region. In our roles as Equity Managers, we support students, admin, staff, and families when navigating issues of racism, bias, and implementing systemic changes to make district education services accessible to all students, while keeping your most vulnerable and historically marginalized groups at the center. The depth and breadth of what we do has exceeded my expectations on what I thought could be possible in this role, and it's an honor to get to be a part of moving the dial in our district when it comes to Equity work. We connect with students and provide space for them to share triumphs and concerns they may be facing in their education experience. We serve as support for affinity groups as requested by affinity advisors and affinity student leaders. This fall, we provided a second round of No Place For Hate training for our middle and high school students in the district, and we are currently supporting the implementation of No Place For Hate groups at each high school and middle school. We provide support to families when their children face disciplinary action and attend IEP meetings for additional advocacy as requested. We connect families to resources in our district, as well as connect them with community organizations as needed or requested. We support our education staff in screening curriculum and lessons to make them culturally relevant for our students in our region. In addition, we hold space for our staff of color to share their experience and give feedback on what supports they need to continue their work in our district. We also support the district in decision quality implementation through the Equity Decision Making Tool. We provide professional development that meets the department's individual needs around Equity work. We advise and collaborate with administrators in our regions when policies and practices are altered and implemented. This list is the tip of the iceberg when it comes to the work we have done so far. Our influence and contributions continue to expand as our district embarks on this journey to provide a more equitable and just education experience for our students. Thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for continuing to make Equity a priority in our district.
Thank you, Seth and Debbie. We're not hearing from OSEA tonight, are we?
No.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Next up on our agenda is comments and committee reports by individual board members. Does anybody want to go first? Judy?
Hi, everyone. First of all, it's fun to be back. It was wonderful to have the students here, and I congratulate them on their accomplishments as musicians. And thank you to everyone that testified from the Network Charter School. I just heartfelt and great examples of a wonderful community. And to all the public comments that we had, as well as employee groups, I really learned a lot and appreciate people taking their time. It's been a while since we've had a regular board meeting, and I'd like to start my comments by wishing It's been a while since we've had a regular board meeting and I'd like to start my comments by wishing the 4J community, which includes students, staff, families, and my fellow board members, a healthy and fulfilling twenty to twenty-three. On January sixth, the school board hosted a legislative breakfast with our Land County delegation. We had five legislators in attendance and were fortunate to have many of them that are in key leadership roles and positions in Salem. And very supportive of public education. In addition, we had several student board reps. Many of you are here tonight in attendance and we had representatives from our employee groups, OSEA, EEA, and MAPS, the superintendent, and a few 4J staff members also. The purpose of the gathering was to share the school board's twenty twenty-three legislative priorities. And to hear from legislators about their priorities for this session. As well as the challenges and opportunities they anticipate coming up. One of our priorities, we had someone testify about tonight, Casey Teeman, is about the environmental legislation. There was also time on the agenda to discuss ways we can work together to make good things happen for our students and families and staff. I'm especially grateful to our student members who added so much depth to the conversation. Your perspectives are greatly appreciated by the legislators and all the attendees. And great comments and examples of mental health supports and career technical education and to name two of them. This year, the Legislative Committee also met with representatives before the breakfast from our 4J employee groups. Because EEA, OSEA, and MAPS all have activities and priorities for the session as well. And we shared our priorities with each other and we're committed this session to work on ones that we have in common, which are quite a few. And at the top of the list, of course, is school funding. Which may be the most critical focus this session. We are making progress in our school funding in Oregon these past few years, but we, and we deeply appreciate and acknowledge the work and support all our local legislators have contributed to this. And we have a ways to go. Increases are needed to help with inflation and wages and to support our students' health and learning. Just even to stay steady with what we're doing now. So we look forward to helping provide information whenever is needed to be sure K-12 is adequately funded. In closing, I just want to share my hope for the new year, which is that we can move forward as a 4J community with a clear and laser focus on our students and the goal of eliminating challenges. And supporting each student in a way that allows them to be healthy and thrive and achieve their dreams. Thank you.
Thank you Judy. Michelle?
Hello. I also had the pleasure of attending the Black Student Union organized Martin Luther King Day event at North Eugene High School. And it was quite impressive and energizing. I thoroughly enjoyed all the education, the art, and there was song and dance. It was lively and very enjoyable. I loved it. A lot of work was clearly put into it and was great to attend. I would like to welcome all our student representatives. We're really happy to see you all and thank you for your very thorough and heartfelt reports. And we look forward to seeing you at the meeting. There was an Equity Advisory last Thursday. And we discussed school-based health centers. We were exploring the need for centers at all the high schools, comprehensive as well as alternative. And tonight we heard that there's also a need for students who attend Eugene online. You can't let any of our students be ignored. Everyone needs to be acknowledged. We also received a lot of great feedback about the creation of a neurodivergent student union. There's a new program coordinator and there's so much possibility with these affinity groups and unions because as we know, the future is intersectional. We briefly touched upon inclusive holidays and will discuss that further in future meetings. It's so important that our schools embrace inclusivity of students and staff of all backgrounds, religions, and cultures. And we need to promote that inclusivity with multicultural awareness. And Judy, I wish everyone a happy new year and Lunar New Year is coming up this weekend. That's the new year that I observe and I'm wishing everyone a very successful Lunar New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Who goes next? Michelle?
Thanks. Well, over the holiday break, I did not have any committee meetings to attend, so I have nothing to report on committee meetings. But I do want to take a moment and say, thank you to Judy and Kirti and staff for setting up legislative breakfast. It was quite successful and I have to agree with those who said it was a great turnout and especially the student reps. I'm not sure how many of them will be driving up to work for our legislators. There were five, is that what you were saying Judy? But I saw quite an interest when particularly one of our legislators talked about having chance for internships. So I hope that works out for those of you that have that interest in being up in Salem. I personally have no interest, no, anyway. So I just really want to thank the Legislative Committee for their work on that. And as I said to everybody, as everybody else said, welcome to the students. It's nice to have you here and I appreciate getting to hear from our employee groups and and Seth, thank you for the introduction of staff, other staff doing the work. Appreciate that. All right, I think that's everything. Maya, you can now turn it over to whoever's left. Thanks.
Thanks Alicia. My pen is small.
I appreciate everybody who spoke from Network Charter. My son, Lucian, loves it there. And he's never left school, as many of you already said. For the first time in my, my mom of five and he's my youngest, he's seventeen. And I have three children with IEPs. And I want to point out that Network doesn't just deal with children that are coming from mostly 4J schools that are have been hurt by those systems. It's also the parents. Because we are trying so hard to figure out what's going on and we're getting gaslit and told all kinds of things and really and I remember sitting in an IEP meeting and being told, and being told this yet again and thinking every person in this room had the master's degree except for my son, that he's the reason everything is wrong. What I kept being told. So all the professionals in the room, the easiest, most innocent person is blamed constantly. And it still happens. And I'm, that's why I'm on this board, because I want this to change. But I'm so grateful that we have somebody, some, a group, it's not just like a one or two people. It's a, it's a body that wants children to to not just survive, but to live and to succeed and to go further. And it's so important. What frustrates me is I shouldn't be every day in school. I know we have the educators with the heart. I've talked to them. They want it too. And then the system has to be all that we do to control everything. We, we need to break some of this stuff down. And so you hear a lot of things from a board that is performative. Performative meaning, we put on a nice performance, but then behind doors, we're like, well, you know, we can't really do that. I, what I want and what I don't participate in is performance. And it doesn't make me very popular, but I'm not here for popularity contest. I'm here because I've had several children who are still as adults struggling because of the damage that is sustained in school. I, at fifty-four, still am struggling from the damage I sustained in 4J schools as a black child. I think what we have was Network. I mean, you guys said amazing things, but it still wasn't as, it didn't show. There's magic in this. I want to say it's magic, but then people are like, magic, great. But it's like, it's not magic. It is just a bunch of people who do not want what we've always had. Because we see the amount of kids that hurt and suffer. And yes, unfortunately die because of this. When I started on this board, we had five suicides. It was in a six-week period from January, I think, to March or something. Maybe I'm not counting right, but it was, I think it was eight weeks. And the sadness of not every one of those people matter. But the sadness of knowing that we had so many things happening at one time. And we didn't have a system already in place and it wasn't a new problem. What I see in Network is that they know about this and there's no, there's no performance unless you're putting them on the play. There's no performance. It's all real. And so when my son is mad at me, because you know, sometimes seventeen-year-olds get mad at you. Sometimes, but he's, he's, he'll come back and he'll talk to me in ways now that is not just absolute frustration of I don't matter, so it doesn't matter. It's like, I matter and this is why you need to do it this way. And I love that beautiful part of what he has gotten there because what I have always said what happened, has happened to my children in 4J schools is they teach a lot of the things we need to know, but they fail to teach worth. And self-worth is, is just as valuable as every other subject. And in fact, we are great at removing it by rules. So when I hear about a tardy policy that just sounds so old-fashioned, so old-fashioned. I, I think I had that tardy policy in a good evening time. I mean, it was normal. You have to go to detention and things like that. We have to be doing things better. There has to be something better than that because we on this board have talked about restorative, not punitive. That new policy is not restorative. And while I don't make any of those rules at those schools, I, I work here with six other people. And plus, all our students, which we have more than that, so we have some great students. What's important here is that we learn and we move forward. And we're not, right now, I believe, moving forward very fast. And I think Network Charter is a leader. You are moving forward. You're saving lives. You have given this mom hope. But you made my son believe in himself and will not love himself more. And I wasn't going to cry this time. But it's so I'm a mom. So, thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. So before I start, 4J had the privilege of hosting a town hall for Senator Wyden this past weekend and it couldn't have happened without the work of several key staff members and I want to draw particular attention to Cory Rusko, one of 4J's custodians who came in on Sunday to set up the gym and made it look beautiful and then stayed well past everyone else to take it down and clean up everything. So thank you Cory for making sure that that space was ready and very welcoming. He facilitated adding, I think, twice as many chairs at the drop of a hat when the crowd came in. So thank you for doing that on a Sunday for us. I also want to, I'll save my comments for Network Charter School for when we have them on the agenda, but I'm very moved by what Laurel said as a former parent myself. I want to take a moment to congratulate all the student musicians who we celebrated tonight on their fantastic achievement. These accomplishments are the result of many, many hours of hard work, talent, and dedication. So well done to all of them. I know they're gone now, but it bears repeating. Another group of students who also captured the community's attention recently deserve some attention. Many of you joined in, may have joined in the chat because North Eugene High School's Black Student Union led the Martin Luther King Junior Day March. If you missed that, you may have had the privilege of hearing them sing the Black National Anthem in the lobby of the Hope Center or caught sight of them gracing the cover of the register guard. So thank you to North Eugene's BSU for leading the community with such determination and action. I'm so proud of you. And this segues perfectly into the next installment of what I call my Heart of 4J series. Because behind these students, holding them up and pushing them forward, is a 4J staff member that resists being spotlighted. And though it is serendipitous that I'm spotlighting her today, I had already planned to do this back in September. It was the perfect time for her to be lauded after the work that the BSU put together this last week. So deep in the heart of North Eugene High School, there is an office with walls painted a beautiful teal, comfortable couch, and shelves filled with the kind of snacks teenagers love. The door to this office is almost never closed, proverbially and literally, and it's rare there isn't someone in there deep in conversation, sharing a laugh, seeking advice, or just enjoying the feeling of being in a safe space that feels like home at school. This office belongs to Ann Christensen, the Regional Equity Manager for the North Region. Though this position is new, Miss Ann, as she is known to the students in the community, is not new to 4J. Miss Ann began her relationship with 4J as a parent volunteer at Kelly Middle School. All three of her kids went through 4J schools and Miss Ann embodies the expression, see a need, fill a need. She jumped headfirst into volunteering to support the students at Kelly, eventually shifting from a volunteer to a 4J staff person. In August two thousand and six, Miss Ann began working at North Eugene High School. And for the past seventeen years, she has impacted countless students in profound ways. So tonight, instead of telling you about the job description she fulfills, which I don't have to because Eddie already outlined what the regional managers do, Equity Regional Managers. I'm going to read from a selection of testimonials and letters to and about Miss Ann written by students in the North Eugene High School Black Student Union. They say the proof is in the pudding and while these words are that pudding. You'll notice a pattern in the words, all of which were written independently without consulting other students. You'll notice many consider Miss Ann a role model and for some, even a mother figure. Many articulate being made to feel welcome, safe, and connected at North Eugene High School because of a relationship with Miss Ann. Many share being challenged to rise to her high expectations of them and how these expectations of and belief in them impact their growth as people. And many speak of not only loving Miss Ann, but of feeling loved by her. So this might be a little longer statement than usual, but I hope you settle in and find inspiration and delight in hearing these testimonials from North Eugene High School students. It's an honor to share their voices with you. What I love and appreciate the most about her is the community she creates. She makes jokes and we all laugh with her. She recognizes and advocates for the importance of our community and of us having each other. Without her, I don't think we would have a community where we laugh and dance and sing and talk. We keep it going and we keep her going, but she started it and she was the one who birthed it for us. And for that, I am forever grateful. Another student says, her unapologetic attitude has been inspiring and comforting. Knowing that there is someone here who will not hesitate to call out what's wrong. And when I walk into the BSU room, Miss Ann always greets me with a smile. And just as she says, it truly does feel like a family. Miss Ann is always there if you need a hug, if you need to talk, or if you just need a place to hang and chill or cool down. Miss Ann is judgment-free and has saved me and helped me find myself. Miss Ann touches everyone's heart in such a special way. She will never let you down. She will never let you down, and she is so reliable if you ever need a hug, laugh, or someone to talk to. She has impacted me in the best way possible. She helped me make friends. Dear Ms. Ann, thank you for having good morals and high expectations for me and my classmates. You are making the community a safer place with your empathy and your integrity. You truly are a paragon of morality and self-control that only a few humans have the capability of having. Your soul is filled with understanding and your actions are filled with integrity. Ms. Ann has been such an important role in my life. Coming from out of state, I didn't really have a good background, but that didn't matter to her. She took me in as if I were one of her own. By doing that, it changed me and made me feel as if I could really change. She put me in roles and positions where I had to leave, and that was very new to me. She opened my mind to new ideas and opportunities, and to her, I am forever grateful. You bear with me, I just have a few more. It's really hard to select when you get a pamphlet if I got fifty people wanting to speak about her. Ms. Ann is truly an inspiration. She is one of the strongest women I know. Meeting Ms. Ann has changed my life in so many ways. I don't have many lead-by-exemple role models or supportive people. Growing up, I only ever know, I have only ever known to put up walls and deal with it on my own. I had this fear of being seen as weak. I'm thankful for her because she understands me in ways that many people don't. I'm very good at hiding my feelings and worries from the world, but it's different with her. I can walk into her room and she will know instantly. She doesn't try and get things out of me or figure out what happened. She just lets me know that I am loved and supported. I appreciate everything she has done and the growth she has helped me accomplish as a person. Ms. Ann is such an inspiration to me as a black woman. She shows me even when people put us down, we are strong enough to rise back up and keep moving on. I want to be able to speak my mind and stand up for what's right while being so loving and such a good person one day, just like her. She inspires me to be truly unapologetically myself, and I love her with all my heart. And this is the last one. I am so grateful to have you in my life. I know that if I am ever having a bad day or just need to get something off my chest, you will be there to listen, give advice, or just be a shoulder to cry on. I appreciate you for being hard on me because I need it. You continue to push me up to be the best I can. You have never doubted me. You have never doubted me. I hope those words ring in your ears and that you find inspiration from them. We are so lucky to be in community with you, Ms. Ann. When I read these testimonials, I'm reminded of Brandon Fleming's proclamation that I embrace as a parent. Love and empathy will change people more than information ever will. Thank you, Ms. Ann, for wisely centering empathy and love as you do the hard work of guiding our youth. Thank you for being such an integral part, integral part of the Heart of Four J. And with that, we move on to taking care of our business. Next on the agenda is the consent group. There are four items on the consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion? Michelle?
I move to approve the consent agenda items.
There are second? Judy? Okay, so, uh, Michelle, she moves to approve the consent agenda items, and Judy Newman seconds that motion. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, that's ayes from all five board members present. That would be Maya Rabasa, Judy Newman, Alicia Hayes, Michelle Chu, and Laurel O'Bourne. That unanimously passes. And Alicia Hayes? Oh, thank you. Yes. Well, and Alicia Hayes, if I do. Um. Now we move on to items for information. We have two items for information this evening. Uh, first is to receive an updated five-year financial forecast. And turn it over to, oh, Director of Financial Services.
Thank you very much. Good evening, June. We do have a five or six-page report in your package, which is the fighter forecast that myself and my staff have put together for you. And I am here to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah. So I just want to be sure I understand this right. Um, I was looking at the chart and, um, which shows our reserves and our expenses and our revenue. And it looks like the last, the, the, starting in twenty, twenty twenty-two, going through twenty twenty-seven, we are spending more revenue than we're getting. And I don't, and then our reserves are going down. I know, I know we have a policy of about five percent. I do think that's the bare minimum. I guess I would like to see us have a plan to slow that, to not be spending more. I mean, I, the revenue, the, is there a plan? Because I think our reserves aren't going to last forever. And coupled with that in the text, it talks about, um, under, under the bullet transfers, some annual transfers, which seem to add up to about one, two, three, four, over four million dollars that are reflected in here, so we are even spending more. So I guess I'm not comfortable sustaining that. Would love to, at some point, know if we have plans to write that.
There are plans to write that. And I want to keep, keep you in mind that this is a forecast. And I don't think it is ever the intention of Dr. Dai or myself to get to where year four or five will look like. We will be making adjustments as needed, as appropriate, year to year. One thing that Dr. Dai also requested that we look at is how have we forecasted in the past? How did we end up? And what we have discovered is that in past forecasts, we have been strongly conservative in our revenues and also our expenses. So we tend to, based on our previous forecast, get more money than we have anticipated and spend less than what we have expected. So that has helped build that fund balance over those last several years. Um, in addition to several other variables. But, um, with a few things coming down the road, one of those discussions may be in the future, those transfers that are discussed here in the past. Uh, those are the things that were taken out during the COVID times when you were unsure of where things were going to be built. So those are internal things that we can take out and put on pause, maybe. Uh, so those would be future discussions for yourself and the budget committee and Dr. Dai if those wanted. And how those.
I'm recording.
Ask the one.
Are there any other questions? Alicia?
Thank you. I know this is kind of a hard question to ask you, but, um, I am not a financial wizard, so I'm going to go to you and I'm gonna, and I know I'm not asking you, um, to, to get us all nervous. But I'm asking, you know, when you look at that, what makes you nervous? What should we be, as a board, looking at? Um, as our expenses go up and our revenues stay the same or, or may go down depending, um, on enrollment and so forth, now, what, what should we be paying attention to? And, uh, where are you, are you nervous at all, or are you concerned? And you don't have to answer that if you'd like to come back another time. Have to, yeah, a little more time to look at it. But those are the kind of things I need to know. Thanks.
So I would comfortably say, as of right now, I am not worried. Uh, I think you have incredible staff and directors of leadership that are able to make decisions along the way so that you never get into a position where you have to make tough choices. That's obviously the goal, is to never bring you tough choices, um, financially speaking. I think there are a lot of variables in the future that are difficult to forecast. Those would be specifically related to union contracts and what the direction and strategic goals of the boards are for things like capital improvements, bonds, option levies, those kinds of things that are very big variables within the forecast that you see. Um, just to give you a, a brief kind of idea, your, your option levy that comes up fairly soon is a rather large portion of your general fund revenue. So if that, for whatever reason, goes away, that means we need to reevaluate where things are and figure out how we're going to work with this. So those are variables that we have a difficult time forecasting in the future. Union contracts, like I mentioned, transfers that are coming up, uh, as well as transfers for operations like, um, I specifically mentioned it here, uh, the Nutrition Services Department and annual transfer to kind of supplement the food food program, uh, and food introduction program. When those federal revolvers go away, that's a pretty big annual transfer. That's the general fund, has a huge fund that programs. So having discussions with you on where that ends and the priorities of your strategic goals in the future uh, would be very important to identify sooner rather than.
And just for clarity, um, you may have this, or Dr. Dai, you may need this and this out. When does our, when are, I know we haven't decided when we're going out for the local option, but when is the soonest we can go? And I appreciate, uh, you talking about the large portion of that local option that helps run the schools, because that really is a school board responsibility to, to do the work to get that passed. So. So that was a statement and a question. Can you figure out which is which?
Uh, if I recall off the top of my head, I believe your option levy is up in two years. Um, you, I believe, could have the option of going out early if you wanted to. Uh, that would be up to order if you decide to go out this November or next November, or is it the following?
All right, thank you. Look, and I asked that question of you, Dr. Dai, and he answered. He should give him extra credit since he was on it.
Yeah, the board will have to decide, uh, based on all other things that are happening politically around, local, city, uh, levies or bonds that go out. We believe is the most practical and strategic time to put on ballot. Uh, for those that do not know, it's between seventeen and twenty million dollars a year representing. It's more in the neighborhood of a hundred and seventy to two billion positions. And this community has been really, really generous with us consecutively for a very long time. But I, I, there's a lot of conversation about there being some end in recession, not knowing its size. We don't yet know, as we're just very beginning of the legislative session, what types of numbers we're talking about from the state general school fund. So working with Matt and his team, we're going to begin to develop, um, budget projections. The current number that's being banded about in legislation or the legislature is nine point three billion dollars for the state school fund. We're going to build budgets for nine point five, nine point seven, ten. The Coalition of Oregon School Administrators is pushing for ten point three with our state representatives. We just won't. We do not know right now and probably won't until June, when our actual budget will be. So, um, we'll be operating on three or four scenarios between now and then. And that's unfortunate, but we are at the beginning of the long session, at the beginning of a biennium. And as the state, um, has habit, we get funded for two years at a time. And so we do this every two years. The first of those two years is, uh, pretty, pretty creative times, and we have to develop a bunch of scenarios that are real. Matt Brown did allude to the fact that we will, we'll have to make some decisions about how we adjust what I call the economic velocity of the district. We have had, um, federal dollars and COVID relief, and those will expire on September of twenty twenty-four. And they've allowed us to do a significant number of things that we have not been able to do in the past. So we're developing two-year budgets to spend those grant dollars down in ways that are responsible, but at the same time provide the supports that students need right now. We don't necessarily save today's dollars for later, because our students have, today have needs today. Um, but, but it, it proves to be very, very, very difficult for us to do more than have educated projections more than two years out, because we have no idea what the legislature is one to give the state school fund for schools. So we try to be very responsible with our money and, um, have reserves such that we can respond to unexpected things. And I hope everybody understands that they see high reserves. That's why we have them. Right now, it can be argued that we should be spending them down, because we have, to a certain degree, not responsibly, but more than what I think, um, maybe more conservative than we have been. I'll, I'll, I'll say that we, we had unexpected increases in our reserves because we had just been so incapable of hiring so many people in the pandemic, purchasing things that we anticipated purchasing because of supply chain issues. Um, you'll hear later in our SIA plan, there were plans that we had and money allocated in those plans that just couldn't be spent because of the situation. Not to drone on, and I, I think, Alicia, that accurate response to your question was in there somewhere.
Covert, do you have some, do you have somebody else? Alicia, would you have a question?
Just a couple other questions, Yana. First of all, it's really nice to have you, Matt, your first meeting with the board. We get to talk for it, so thank, I'm glad you're here and stuff. Um, so the, uh, area about unknown salary and benefits, kind of, that, uh, upcoming changes and future discussions to the general fund. Because we've negotiated contracts, uh, is that, I mean, would that be semi-known, or is it just about?
So we take, in, in my forecast that I've done here is, um, if you take the license union contract, for example, I will typically take the average of what those colas are over the contract and then say it's five percent. Um, I will forecast that five percent in the future years. But what that may actually end up, um, for example, take the visa white contract. Um, that was something that we would, I would have looked at the past, looked at the average, forecasted that out. But where we ended up was larger colas than anticipated. Uh, so those are the variables that we kind of had to adjust for on the fly when we're updating forecasts.
So with time, we'll be more certain about that. And then, then my last, I, I just worry a little bit about the state school fund projected four point three. I hope that happens. Right now, they're projecting two point four. So we have a ways to go. But that's, but there's just a lot of things. I know there are a lot of moving parts, but I just want to be as thoughtful as we can.
Lots of variables, and as Dr. Dai mentioned, we've built multiple scenarios to be sure that we're prepared for whatever comes.
And, and, and I'd also like to say with the budget committee, I want to request that we talk about that five percent reserves. I know, and, and really just understand what that means. Not that, you know, a lot of nonprofits are more at ten percent reserves. So I just would like to make sure we're thinking ahead, that's all.
Financial policies are definitely on the task list. I, I am not a hundred percent confident with you tonight that we would be able to get to those by June, just for our staff and everything that we have going on right now. But it's definitely something we have on the list for at the very latest next possible year to bring back to talk about the policies.
Thank you so much.
I'll just say, I'll, I'll just say, this probably looks a little bit promoting, because we, um, approved two really amazing contracts with our, um, well, three. But, um, because Matt just kind of was in there in the middle quietly. But, but we agreed to things that needed to happen. So while, while, um, you get to have all the fun with the stuff that we, we decide on, but I think it's really natural that we're, what we're seeing here, because we knew that we were asking a lot out of our budget. And, but when we asked superintendent, we asked, um, what's your official title? Sorry.
Uh, Director of Financial Services.
Director of Financial Services. Um, to, we were told, yeah, this could happen. It's, we can make it work. So I, I believe that, and I just wanted to put that out there. While, yes, you should be aware, I get what you're saying, Judy. But it's gonna look, it's kind of when you make that big purchase at home, when you're like, ew. you should be aware, I get what you're saying, Judy, but it's gonna look, it's kind of when you make that big purchase at home and you're like, ew. And for a little bit, you're looking at things a tiny differently, but I think we'll get there. And hoping for no, not government, no recession. Thank you so much for the, the work, and we promise to give you more.
Okay, there's no other questions. Thank you. So I have received a request for a very quick break. I hate to do that to you all, but we've been here since five and maybe drank too much water. So Judy, do I hit the devil when I recess or just?
I'll recess.
Okay, well, give us just a few minutes and we will be back, let's say, at nine fourteen. We'll be back in, at nine twenty. At the risk of breaking protocol, I would like to make a motion to the board that we do a last-minute amendment to the agenda and switch the last item for information with the first item for action. So our dear friends from Network Charter School can, and I'm out. Does anybody want to second that? All right, so I've moved to switch the agenda from the last item of the items for information with the first item for action. And Michelle Shu has seconded that. Is there any discussion? Let's see, Alicia.
And Alicia here.
Okay, well, all those in favor of amending the agenda, raise your hand, say aye.
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 It's like a super. All four members have voted aye with Alicia Hayes, Maya Rasa, Judy Newman, Laurel O'Rourke, and Michelle Shu starting to amend the agenda. And with that, we move into the first item for action, which is to approve a ten-year renewal of the public charter school contract with Network Charter School. Is there a motion? Michelle, are you raising your hand?
Yes, I move to read.
Microphone.
Oh. I move to approve the renewal of public charter school contract for Network Charter School.
For the ten-year renewal?
For ten-year renewal.
Is there a second? Judy?
Laurel?
Okay, so Michelle Shu moves to approve the ten-year renewal of the public charter school contract with Network Charter School. And that was seconded by Laurel. Is there discussion? Judy?
I just have a question because it was originally in the package for five years and then it was ten. And I'm just interested, I'm going to ask superintendent or whoever you designate to answer, sort of the pros and cons and setting it for ten years versus five, just so we all understand.
Thank you. Cassandra is in the back, and if I begin to misrepresent, you can glare at me and I'll know that'll bring you up. The request was for ten years. And we have other charter schools that have done several five-year stints and proven to be great partners and willing to work on issues that we recognize or that they bring to our attention. There's nothing in the history of our relationship to suggest that we wouldn't continue to do that. We have other charter schools on a ten-year payment and we figured ultimately that was the goal for that school and us because of the service that we provide. If something does come up, we would need to work together. And I don't see a reason why anybody at charter school or Network Charter would not be willing to do that. And so it makes sense to apply to the request.
Laurel?
Um, I, I guess this is a question for superintendent and and any school admin other than now yet. I would like to see them get more support, which financial support from the district, which I know there's charter contracts and things like that, which I don't need to understand. It's, it's people with money to do that. What I, but I really, when we hear the numbers of them now, the tier-three students, and we hear the, how well it's working. And, but we also hear that, you know, there's the intent that they want to be able to, and we're asking for things and there are stuff that they need to do. I think we need to be able to support that more. And I want that to be done in a way where the support is expected, not that you have to ask for it and hope, fingers crossed, that somebody at the district is listening. Is there a way to do that?
You know, it, it, yeah, there are. It depends on the type of support. We wouldn't want to offer something that's not helpful. We also wouldn't want to have an expectation that you would take us up on offer support, that offers of support that don't really align with the experience that you want to provide for your students. I hope that there's never a feeling of there being some type of burden upon us or inconvenience to us if you ask for some type of support. I can't guarantee that the answer will always be yes. We'll always sit down in a conversation and see how we can get there. And if not yes to that, then what might possibility look like? I think a lot of our, excuse me, training and PD oftentimes can be very helpful and oftentimes also might be just slightly to the left or to the right of the experience that you're hoping to provide. But I think the strength of the relationship is going to really be based on open dialogue. When we talk about school improvement plans, what is it that you think that we can provide to you, given what you know about us? What is it that we think might be helpful and that you'll consider what we offer? I just think more regular communication, not that it's inadequate, but just at the very least, continue what we have, if, if not increase the frequency back and forth so we have a better sense of what's available and what's possible.
Can I follow up? And I'm, I'm also thinking of money, though. You know, what you did said is great, but I'm also like, they, they, they don't get as much money or their, their staff, I don't believe financially is going to pay as much. And that's normal for charters, right? But when we have such an invaluable resource that we understand, and this could go for other charter schools that are working with a lot of tier three as well. I would like to know how we, as a board, can support the people doing that work. Because we want, as we understand and we know, supporting people by paying them is a great way to start.
Uh, yeah, I think that we could apply for grants in partnership in terms of just giving network charter dollars from our general fund. I think that's a really complicated question and would require more conversation. I wouldn't want to be irresponsible and say absolutely not or absolutely yes. I, I think an answer like that would come from more conversation at the board level, more conversation with staff. I think there's a lot of ways to get after funding and other means of support for network charter that could make sharing that condition maybe easier for you to do as an institution.
Go ahead, I'd like to add myself to the queue.
I just had a comment, one thing that struck me was that the enrollment was lower than capacity is what I got from the data and has been for a few years. So my question is, how do families find out? It seems like from the parents' testimony as they have, you know, done their research and discovered networking. So I just, I wonder, is there a way that district staff would let families know where, when, when a traditional high school situation is working for a student? How, how does that happen? Because it would be good to increase enrollment if they need it.
Yeah, I think that the school does what it, what it can, correct me if I'm wrong, to market the school and tell the community about what's available and to have an open and welcoming campus for when students or families want to reach out and learn a little bit more. I know what the experience is like, to feel like you're screaming from the rooftops about what's here and somebody comes to you and says, I've never heard anything before. I know that our counselors and our registrars are familiar with, with options outside of just our comprehensive high schools. Given some of the changes that may have occurred over the last several years, it may be that they don't have the most up-to-date language to describe the experience that you provide. I see some heads shaking yeah and some heads shaking no, so that's clear that more conversation is probably going to benefit. So I, I, I think that maybe we should schedule something with your folks and see what we might do to ensure that you're able to communicate clearly about what we can do and you can communicate clearly about what your institution is able to do.
So I, to piggyback on my question, Judy, I think that, that also ties into Laurel's question. And it's not money directly from the district, but when your funding is reliant on your ADM, then you get more funding. So enrollment does impact the school and it's something that is a constant concern. And I think that we definitely, I appreciate hearing that we could do a little work on our side to maybe make our, our mainstream schools more familiar with the programming and, and being able to identify students that might benefit from a shift. And that could improve enrollment numbers. I also think that following through on the recommendation to do a ten-year renewal versus a five-year will allow the school to experience a sense of stability that has been elusive. When you're a school that is serving a population that is really more likely to thrive with stability and the institution itself is challenged, that, that doesn't, that's not helpful. And I know that we finally, you finally have a building that is permanent, so there isn't a question of where do we go because that was a question for a while. So now erasing the question of will we be renewed, I think will be really helpful. I know that, for example, other things that you all have done have contributed to that stability also. You know, Heather has been there for a number of years when in the past that position has been a rolling position. And that's the way that four J can also contribute to supporting you is making sure that the position, the one position that we have in relationship to you maintains its stability. So I'm, I'm really eager, having witnessed the last twenty years close-up of the Network Charter School life, to see you experience stability in lots of different ways. And when superintendent dimensions grants, there's nothing, that, one of the most important things is to demonstrate that the district that sponsors you has confidence in you. And giving you a contract for ten years is a great way to say, look, they believe in us. You need to believe in us also. So I'm, I'm really excited for us to take this vote. And I'm really excited for you all to maybe, I don't know, have it as like a part of your twenty-year celebration is this, you know, entering the next decade with a promise of half of your lifespan ahead of you without worrying about a contract. I don't know if anybody else has anything else to add before we take it to a vote. Laurel?
Well, I just wanted to, to speak to the part about how school and communi- communication, and I don't think what I'm about to say is, is strange or is the norm. When Lucian, when I removed Lucian from South because he was failing so dismally and his mental health was failing so dismally, South saw it as a failure, I think he went to Network. So we really need to look at our partnerships. Because if a child isn't in South, they're at Network, or if they're not at Network, maybe they go to Twin Rivers or they go, you know, we're all working together and we have, and kids have siblings in other schools, they have siblings. This is all a, what is that called? There's a name for it that I probably learned in school, which I can't remember right now. But it's an organism. We are all working together. And it's a big organism and we need to support each other. So it can't, when the, the, the thought is, oh, it's a failure of, of our team that your child had to go to a different school, but really thought should be, well, I hope that's, and I'm sure they did, hopefully did better there, but that shouldn't be, I got a lot of, I'm so sorry emails instead of support and happiness. We just need to change that, that thought process and that starts with the thought. So I, I'm really hopeful that we can work on that because once that changes, I think we will see more people being sent there and seeing it as a good thing. Or just a discussion, because we, nobody should be sending something anywhere, so erase that. But a discussion of what your possibilities are and what could be best for you is so important. And there's no failures there. Because when your focus is on that child's best interest and not your own interest, then there's no failures if you're working hard to find the best place for them. Thanks.
So if there's not more comments, I propose that we take a vote so we can take that first step from the top to demonstrate our confidence and appreciation of you all. Because it's absolutely true. Reputation and appreciation will gain a hand. You all very much deserve the highest of votes. So, in my opinion. Without further ado, all those in favor of approving a ten-year renewal of the public charter school contract with Network Charter School, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is a unanimous vote to approve the ten-year contract. The votes from Alicia Hayes, Maya Rasa, Michelle Shu, Judy Newman, and Laurel O'Rourke. And you all are welcome to stay for more of the meeting, but I have a feeling we'd like to let your guests celebrate. So thank you for being patient like this and.
Have a cookie on the way out.
Have a cookie on your way out. There's lots of cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, well, then now we take one step back since we jumped over the second item for information. And we will now look at an update on the audit of the student investment account and Superintendent Dai and Chief of Staff process are taken over the floor.
Thank you. We'll do our best to be concise and informative and give you the opportunity to answer some questions, knowing at the end what should be coming at you in the way of more information and more more granular level information as the deadline to submit the grant approaches. But this is our presentation about integrated guidance. Please. So you'll recall, Oregon Department of Education has replaced several different disconnected grant processes processes with a single process that they're referring to and we are referring to as integrated guidance. It's an attempt to streamline reporting and administrative processes associated with multiple state grants. And that better reflects how we actually break the funding together, the Compliments of Education Program. It actually helps us, we take advantage of it, be more efficient and more concise in both our plans for our students and families and the manner in which we'll spend our money. So as we began the school year, we moved to focus our work with intentionality and alignment around three foundational principles that we've been referring to as the three box. Time line communication and meaningful engagement with parents and community. Organized focus on equitable access and advancement for everyone, but with an amplified focus on the desires of those who have been traditionally served in safety and well-being for both students and our staff. And safety and wellbeing for both students and our staff. You um may recall, but you may not have recall, seeing um this graphic earlier. It's a, on the far left of that somewhat arrow-like figure, the six areas that are included in integrated guidance, the common elements. Um, and then the state's common goals. And this uh was good to see and good to reflect on because what. We will see on the next slide, if you don't mind, is that um their common goals are very well aligned with our three big rocks. They want to see the the community engaged. And we want to have an outcome for our district. Be timely communication and meaningful engagement with parents and community. Uh, they want to see equity advanced and we want to see. That's okay. We want to see a coordinated focus on equitable outcomes for everyone and excellent experiences for everyone. But with an amplified focus on those who have historically been underserved. They want to see a well-rounded education and we want to see our resources and time also go to support, safety, and wellbeing for students and staff. So um, the integrated guidance process has six phases. Uh, the first is an evaluation, which we've completed and you've gotten some information about it in the board packet and you'll hear from Dr. Best this evening. Community engagement, which we started last spring, continue throughout the summer and will continue throughout. Really the rest of the year, certainly um with intentionality around the rest of the development of the integrated guidance um. Grant application. Our work will result in a list of strategies that really defines what our instructional focus will be. Over the course of the next three to four years. Um, that will be widely shared after there is feedback taken from all stakeholders. So that we can effectively communicate to everyone, what are we working on? That can be a very difficult thing for someone. To articulate if they're not in many, many, many conversations. So we want. To provide timely information and meaningful engagement so that they know what our four areas of focus is. After we get those lists of strategies, we'll have the opportunity to develop the budget with the finance department. We present to the board for your review and approval so that we can submit by the due date of March thirty one. And Rob, you have the opportunity to share what you feel is pertinent information from the evaluation. Before you go, I would say one thing. That we saw looking at the last SIA grants. That it was approved by the board on March eighteenth of twenty twenty. That was in the middle of the first week that we were out of school. Two days after that, everybody. Thought we were coming back to school after a week of spring break and we didn't walk back in the door for almost a full calendar year. Uh, and that's not to say, hey, what you hear in this evaluation is the reason why things didn't work. I just think it effectively. Provides a context into which our efforts have been nested over the last two to three years. Rob, please go on.
Yeah, so it was it was fascinating looking back at, you know, what got approved and then what happened. And we 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 all got good at pivoting, remember that word? And we're gonna do Zoom and all of those things. And care and connection became a top priority statewide and and of course in our in our system. If you look at these uh, these, these are the projects that uh, the 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 major strategies that got approved in the, in that twenty twenty. And as the district uh did that pivoting, did that care and connection and um. Moved through the pandemic, which really affected three school years, the end of of twenty twenty, all of twenty twenty one. And then last year was never felt normal in terms of um. The the pace we're on previously. And then if you look at our enrollment trends, you saw the presentation tonight where. You you know, we had invested in the first round of this, we're gonna invest three million dollars into reducing class size. Well, we lost a lot of students during the pandemic and we we didn't reduce staff at the school, so. In effect, our class size has got reduced that way, so we shifted money into more care and connection. And and developing the the equity and inclusion department, which previously had just been been uh one person. And those strategic moves helped us be able to meet the needs during that time of of the pandemic, so. So, but ODE still measured us on the five indicators. Third grade reading. Four-year graduation, ninth grade on track, five-year completion and attendance. And and that's the constant. And when we put, when you see the SI, the integrated guidance plan, we put forth. Fourth and and uh several, in a few weeks here, it's gonna be here before we know it. You'll see that everything we do, the goal is that those longitudinal markers improve. We still um, got a whole binder full of data that the state gives us on those five, five markers. And in the link that was sent in the, in the Friday memo, the board packet kind of goes into some of the details. I'm happy to sit down and go over this with anyone who wants a more detailed look. But we still have um achievement gaps and opportunity gaps. And we're not where we need to be in terms of all kids being successful. And so that's really gonna be the focus as we bring forward our plan is to is to focus on those things. And if you can see, these are um. The areas that every year we made some adjustments based on what was happening and. The same will be true when we do, when we do this year's proposals. What the strategies will remain the same, the activities. Will move based on the needs that we're seeing. So that's kind of the overview of what happened. I think our, of those five indicators, the one that we made the most traction on. Uh, during the last three years was ninth grade on track. We saw some double-digit increases and closing of gaps in in that. We're still not where we need to be in terms of, would we like to see ninety-five percent of our ninth graders on track to graduate? And we're in the, in in the eighties right now, eighty-five percent. So, so that's um in all of all the groups. So that's, that's kind of, that was our 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 most successful area. We made the third grade reading. We're setting the pieces in place to maintain on that. We we did all the work on uh choosing a curriculum. And we have a high-quality curriculum, we're getting it into the schools, we're training teachers how to use it. That's a multi-year process. And we we hope to see, uh, the third grade reading has has not increased yet. But through that uh uh strong implementation, our hope is that we see that. And the new schedule going in at the high school should move our for, our graduation rates up. As we give kids more opportunities to to be successful. And um, so you'll see lots of some similar things. And you'll see lots of some new things in this next round of grant grant proposal. And it's a big team effort, instruction, finance, uh communications, all of, multiple departments all work on this. It's uh, the application that we turn into the state is a narrative. They have fifty assigned questions. Each question requires a two hundred and fifty-word answer. Most of the people working on it will end up with a fifty to a hundred-page document by by the time we're done, plus a full budget for two years. On about seventeen million dollars total uh targeted spending to generate results in these areas. So we're, we're chasing the three big rocks, we're climbing them. And we're, we're excited to be able to share this with you. In the next, every board meeting, there'll be some progress on this that you see.
So then um, I'll go through what I believe to be about four or five more slides. Um, that will give you a sense of what's to come in terms of the process. Around around having an engaged community in twenty nineteen, we um, we engaged the community in. Really in-depth surveys and had a series of meetings with those who wanted to attend in each of the regions of our district. This time around, we asked, given what we learned from our last process. Asked the leadership team and the folks that had been involved, how did that go and how could we improve it? What we heard was that we needed to be really more thoughtful and more targeted in our conversations. As a result, we built an engagement strategy more tailored to the work that we needed to do, building engagement into all of our conversations. And deeply into decision-making process, rather than standalone process that might have survived, sufficed in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. But also may not have provided important feedback or insight into our operation and planning processes. Uh, that that's really critical to our district's success moving forward. Throughout the year, um, oh, thank you. Throughout the year, the district has integrated engagement into how we perform all operational practices, including. Um, the hundred and thirty to hundred and fifty superintendent checks that I did. We just completed a communication audit. We have completed um collecting the information and are just beginning to disseminate information about the upbeat employee surveys. And it will ultimately include stakeholder review and feedback once a draft is completed for this plan. Ultimate goal is to not only give stakeholders an opportunity to provide input. But to also build intentional opportunities to amplify voices that might not have in the past been a standard part of our decision-making process. So in terms of a list of strategies, what will happen is it will bring all of the pieces of the information that we get together. Right now, instructional department teams are hardworking developing a plan uh that will support the focus areas identified in our three big rocks. That also nicely align with the state requirements for reporting on the funding that we receive. We believe that through this process, we'll have a much more aligned and coordinated approach to our work that maximizes. The available state resources while providing a much needed clarity and guidance to staff and school communities as they develop their own school. Outcome of this work will provide a roadmap now for the district team, uh district uh little departments outside of the instructional side of the house. But also help to prepare families with more information so we can better partner with them when students are not in school and they're at home. So in terms of the next steps, this is what we can expect to see. We will return to you, uh, students, members of the board and listening community with um information on February one. About our key strategies that we uh believe will best get us to a place where we can deliver on the three big rocks. Following that, uh, and after some feedback and probably some tweaking, we'll develop a budget. That will also come back to you. That budget will be based on the activities that we believe will best um. To make those strategies a reality. At your March first meeting, we'll bring you a first reading of our comprehensive, the comprehensive plan. Uh, followed by an opportunity for community feedback, for you to ask us questions. We can make some changes so that if necessary. We can take the March fifteenth board meeting to get final approval so that we can do what we need to do to fill out. The template from ODE for March thirty first, which is the deadline. Happy, happy to answer any questions.
Laurel?
I know. It seems like studying for the test. And I don't want all this to be studying for the test, you know? So I want all this information and stuff and things that we're doing to be used. In more ways than, you know what I'm saying? And like my equation to this is how my kids had, you know, in. Mainstream school, I'd cram for the test and the teacher would be, you know, and just practice all the rules and my kids would get stressed and I would be like. Make sure they get a good breakfast. And I just, the thing I worry about with this. Is that, yes, ODE sets us up for following the same. The same guidelines of how things have always been, right? We have these things and you guys make sure this all happens to get there. And I like what everything is put together. I just want to make sure we can use it way more than just this. I want to know. What four J is famous for is asking our opinions and nobody hears anything about it. Or we hear something very sweet and airy. But we want the truth. We know it's not all rosy as parents. We, if there, no, we have work members. Um, so getting that information out there in an honest way and um. Making it accessible in a way that's easy, like, the other thing that happens, it'll be given to us, but it's like. Such a tight, long laundry list of quote-unquote. That you can't, you're like, I don't have time to read this. I have like eight other things I need to do. I wish I could, I wish. Somebody could have made this easier to look at. But that's done on purpose, right? So you just don't look at all this stuff because you probably won't like what it says. So while I love all this, can we also have a another whole plan that says. This is how we're going to use this information in other ways. I know ODE has ways that we need to use it. And I know it's built in that we're going to use it in some ways. But I think we're getting, we're gonna get a lot of really good information. And we can use that in many, many more ways than what is, what has been outlined. And that would excite me and I think would absolutely be much further on that communication rock. Than than um. Than we've ever been, than we've ever been, because we want to know as parents and we can't be treated like we we wouldn't understand.
And I I think, I I agree on many of the points that you made. Uh, I think because um. I'll say that the district is aspirational in our goals and because the last time we did this was the first time that we did this. We had forty-four outcomes. Forty-four different outcomes than we anticipated delivering on with. Eighty-seven, eighty-seven strategies and seventy-seven different activities. And then we had to develop a budget to track each of these signatures on those. And I think forty-four outcomes, that that's really, really difficult for an organization. Um, regardless of how hard we work to actually track and monitor and communicate progress boards. And we got too granular in the wrong places and too expansive in the wrong places. And we've learned a lot. We're gonna have three outcomes. And they're really broad outcomes that persist over time. That we can get better and better and better at. And each of the school's school improvement plans can be aligned. To how they are going to deliver on those three big rocks, given who they serve and who they have on staff. And what their particular needs are. It's not going to be a, hey, every school in the district, this is what you're gonna do. It's, hey, every school in the district, this is the direction that we're heading and this is our destination. What do you believe you need to do in order to get there? And then our job is to provide that level of support to schools.
I love it, but. It's not happening yet. So I mean, as far as, how do they know? Sorry, how do they know? That he's taken off the 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 shuttle?
Oh, I, I don't know that they do, but those that are listening now may. And we've had these conversations and I don't mean. To suggest, oh, it's just this simple, do it like this. It'll take a lot of institutional discipline, a lot of focus. And we'll need your support because we'll come up with this plan. And somebody's gonna come to you and say, these are the things we want you to do now because this came up. And we can't do everything, so. We'll have to decide. That's a wonderful idea and it is important, but not more important than the things we're doing now. Uh, question?
Um, in in the report that was, oops. In the report that was provided to us that has a lot more details, um. It breaks down um. The groups of students who do need the most attention. And some of those numbers during the pandemic are. Are shocking. Um, and in two years, they all. So we need to give credit to, um, we need to give credit where it's due. Educators have been working really hard, it's clear. And the tracking that's been done and graduation rates have gone up. So, yes, there's always room for improvement, but we have to acknowledge that there has been improvement. And it's significant.
Yeah, I don't, thank you. I don't say it lightly, but I I absolutely believe that we have staff that can do this. I absolutely do. I think that they they have been doing it. They did it. They have proven that. We can climb out of this. Uh, and if we invest our dollars wisely in a focused way. If we um allow them both the. Suppose the clarity and the agency that they need at each school level. And the support along the way. We can do exactly what we want to have happen. We just, as a district, we have to stay focused. And I believe we can do that. Yes. Okay, I can't say that, that's your job.
Um. I guess, I. I was talking about the details, like of what, all the things you were talking about go into this. And um. So years ago, I was invited to a a meeting in this room as a T, as a, as a parent of a child, child of children who were part of the spending program. And we were told by the district that. And we were told by the district that this was the beginning of several meetings and we get the information that we gave out from this meeting and nothing ever happened. I remember sending an email and not hearing anything back. And so one of my questions I asked, can we use this information in many different ways? It's really to say, you're going to get so much information and and to share it with the parents, you know, and to keep us informed about what is going on and what is going right and maybe what we want to work on and all these kinds of things. So it's not, I, I get this is a whole huge plan that involves a lot of stuff, but I'm saying inside of this plan, there's a lot of information and a lot of data and I've always been frustrated by the lack of information, I guess. And it's always been, if I get anything, it's spoon-fed in this beautiful package of unrealness. Cause at the same time, they're telling me everything's rosy. My son is talking about how he doesn't need to be alive and how he's the stupidest person in the world. And I'm like, can, can we have something that matches here? Like a good, great example of mental health. Well, we're dealing with all the mental health things that were going on at the beginning of last year. And the district is telling us, it's fine, we're doing everything. It was like, it was patently obvious, that's not true. And, and so, well, I know that's a different regime, but I just want to make sure that we are, and I know this is hard to do when you're at the level of need to know and taking care of things and things need to look a certain way. Cause there is a balance. I get that, you know? Uh, the parity can't be all lopsided, like you need to know all the dirt. It, but it does, we do need to know a lot more than we get. And when we're asking questions, and I'm not talking about one parent asking questions. I'm talking about us offering the information as we get all these data and stuff from parents, we offer it. I would love, because we're going to have it. And at the same time, it just makes, it makes, it settles, I can't be the only parent to feel more settled knowing more. Cause I, cause we're, a lot of us dealing with a lot of frustration. My thing is a simple solution to a huge problem we have where parents just deal with so much frustration. I'm not talking about the ones that just feel so entitled for everything to be exactly the way they want it to be. I, I'm talking about the majority of parents and a lot of the kids that are on these, you know, demographics who feel they have zero voice. My thing.
Yeah, and I think, you know, for, for an old guy like me, um, we used to dream of knocking to like this, that the state would give you this level of resource and say, make a dent, make a difference with the, these, in these areas, these targeted areas. And, and to me, I mean, we've only done this once, you know, we, we, we tried a few years ago. You know, this is money that a lot of us have been, have been lobbying for actively for, you know, ten, twelve years, a long time. And, and now we have it. And, yeah, we have to do the assignment. We get it. But you know what? We're gonna, we're not just doing it to do it. We're going to do it focused on three big, big, big concepts. We're move the dial with individual students. And you know, you see, you saw the reports that we get that the state is holding us accountable to, that we're going to hold ourselves accountable to. And being able to communicate that and make progress on that and learn as we go and get better is, is what this is all about. That's why, you know, we want to bring this before you, before you now and keep saying, hey, we're here, we're working on this. And lessons we learn just with this little grant hopefully can also help us as we build our big strategic plan for the district. And we are.
Yeah.
And, and that's next after this.
Right. I mean, I think that it, it is, I mean, if we're thinking about it in a comparison to, I think he's studying for the task, he's doing the assignment. Often it's the process and not the product because this is a chunk of money, but in all realistic analysis, this is a really small percentage of our budget. But what we're doing by being forced to do this assignment is clarify all of the things that we as a district want to do. This isn't just like on the side. This isn't the answer to these things. This is a part of the answer. And the assignment, doing the assignment helps us be really clear about what needs to be done and how we want to do that. And the how, which I'm really excited when you say, you know, it's the, here's the end goal, but then it's asking schools and recognizing them as individual communities to find a pathway there that suits their community and that serves their community. And that might look similar at different schools. It might look very different at different schools. And that's, but it's the end goal that I think this assignment is what's getting us to. And this is just a very small portion of the means by which we will achieve those goals. I mean, I'm not a math person, but the percentage of these several million dollars compared to our overall budget, it's, the value in this is really the assignment. Don't get me wrong. Very happy to have these millions of dollars because I have spent a lot of time doing what you just described and walked in Salem and demanded and written letters and whatnot. And it is nice to have them.
To answer your point, uh, one of your points earlier, though, well, part of the reason that we did the communications audit is we know that we tried to communicate a great deal. But it is not always landing and being received in the way that we wanted to. So we brought in a really broad swath of focus groups and parent groups and talked at schools to ask what works, what doesn't, how do you want to get information? When we present information and it, and it works, what does that look like? And when it looks like we've given you a haystack when you ask for a needle, what does that look like? So I think we have some valuable information that we can use to more consistently and in a more timely way provide information that people will be able to digest.
Are there any more questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Rob and Andy, that was helpful. Um, and next, we move back to our items for action. And we need to approve the process for superintendent evaluation. We saw this last time, um, before we, I asked, there is a motion. Judy, I believe it was you who asked if the proposal was missing information and, um, it in fact was not. If you look at the proposal under the, you know, there's objective one, objective two, there's goals, objectives. And then if you look at key actions, that's the distinction that, um, marks what we, um, what, what Andy has set forward as his goal that we will be, you know, evaluating and basing those. So, um, before we discuss, I just wanted to clear that up. But is there a motion to approve the superintendent evaluation, the process for the superintendent evaluation?
I'm to approve the process for superintendent evaluation.
Is there a second? Judy, okay. Michelle Shu moves to approve the process for superintendent evaluation and it was seconded by Judy. Is there any discussion? Okay, in that case, uh, all those in favor of approving the process for the superintendent evaluation, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Uh, that passes unanimously with aye votes from Maya Rabasa, Alicia Hayes, Michelle Shu, Judy Newman, and Laurel Warwick. Um, I have a.
Um, it's an item for action at a future meeting. I just have that.
Okay. I'm just, this is the time. Okay. Well, it's only three minutes. I was going to suggest seeing the time that we push the item for action at a future meeting to our next meeting. But Superintendent Guy says that it is only a three-minute item, so.
To be completed in two.
See if you can speak as fast as Kylie Rogers.
Yeah, it is just, um, an indication that we intend to come back to the board with answers to questions that I hope that you pose to us over the course of the next couple of weeks about, um, the information that you would need in order to feel you could make an informed decision about whether or not we leave the existing North Eugene High School building up or whether we demolish that building and replace it with green space. Kyle Tucker and I can provide you with some information that we, that we currently have about the pros and the cons. Um, and many points from both the city and, and building facilities perspective that we think could help seed some thought about what questions you might have. But we, if we're gonna, whatever we're gonna do, we have to make a decision in relatively short order. I think the window is certainly by the end of February. Would be the hope so that we can put in place, uh, steps that we need to take in order to, to do that effectively. And I won't go any further, but just, it's up.
I just have a question related to it. Does it fit in with the whole North Eugene?
Yeah.
Oh. Does, does that specific question, it seems like it fits in with our whole North Region planning. Correct?
Well, I, I suppose it could. If it stays up, then that affects the plan. If it goes down, then that affects the plan. But it being one way or the other isn't necessarily required. Um, there, there, there isn't a North Eugene plan that includes that building being there or a North Eugene plan requires that building being gone. There are just implications that I think are important for you to know about. So that when we make a decision, we, we make a quality decision, knowing all the facts. There are financial implications. There are field space implications. So I think that would be helpful for you to know.
I just, I, I thought that first original plan about North Eugene included the old north building until we learned there might be more extensive repairs than we had originally thought. That's, that's my memory of it. So let's say if we take it down, that we, we really needed it to make a fourth, so we'd need alternative. Yeah, I think it does fit together, but.
It absolutely fits together. We, as I recall, there was discussion about what might be possible if the building remained. And then pandemic came in, caused escalations, went up thirty-six point five percent and still rising. And what we know at this point in time is that it would take approximately thirty million dollars to just bring the building up to code without making any structural changes or remodeling. Boiler, roof, piping, DDCs, fire suppression, pitchback. Um, and that's thirty million dollars that we did not budget in either the bond or the general fund without really any noticeable change.
Alicia?
Thanks. I was, you know, thinking along the same lines Judy was, that I thought we kind of moved towards that building isn't, there's better use for thirty million dollars than trying to save that old building. But I think what we're all committed to, I won't speak for the whole group, so I'll speak for myself. What I am committed to is that we deal with the, uh, where is YG going to be? I've got the little head thing and I would love, I've got six months left. And I would love to have that nailed down. And I know we, uh, this board made a decision to do a North Region Committee that reported to the board. I'm not sure it is meant that often. And I will be very curious what that group says. I mean, I know there's some other options. So Superintendent, I think you can get us all to say tear it down, but would be really helpful if we said tear it down and use some of that money to build, you know, new buildings on this land or figure out our next step. Cause, um, I, I gotta have that vision and I think we all felt that way. Again, I want to speak to the whole board. It's just my feeling that we all felt that way when we, uh, put that committee together. And I believe Maya and Gordon were our representatives. And now I believe it has changed to Michelle uh, when she joined. Um, so, uh, I, I guess I would just say, I'm, I'm going to have a lot of questions for that committee and hear what they've been doing over the last number of months. It's been almost a year, I think, since we constituted that committee. So, thank you. And Kyle, tear it down. Anyway, but I'll wait to hear before I give you my opinion. You say thirty million? I gotta say, hmm, there's, yeah, okay. Be curious to hear next time. Thanks.
Do you want to talk about the committee? We're meeting with, um, the Kelly YG Subcommittee on Friday of this week. And we have some ideas that we would like to present to them that we believe solve the lists that each the YG staff and the Kelly staff gave to us last spring. I firmly believe that some of those items on the list may disappear and others appear. So what we want to do is hear, what is it that you need us to fix? And we can propose some solutions by reprioritizing, um, funds that we got from being on a budget on other things. I think we'll have something to report on that in relatively short order.
Are there any more questions before we get more information, I assume, at the next meeting? Okay, great. Our next regular board meeting is on Wednesday, February first, twenty twenty-three. Before we close, are there suggestions by the board for consideration of items at a future meeting? Laurel?
I would like to have a discussion as a board about, um, I, well, I would like more help, uh, for our leadership. I, we don't have board goals. We haven't moved forward in a lot of ways that we need to. And so a discussion as a board of, is there support that can be provided? Like higher support, um, mentorship, leadership, coaching, something that helps us move things forward because I think this would be very helpful. Um, I'm not saying what it needs to be. The board can decide that, but I think what I've found in the past when, um, when there's, things are stagnant, that it's helpful to have more, just to have more help. So that's what I propose, a conversation about how to support board leadership.
Are there two other people that want to add this, to have this considered to be added to an agenda?
Maya?
Sorry, I didn't have my, I'm asking that there's two other people that are raising their hands to support having this considered through an agenda item.
Can I ask for clarification?
Laurel, are you okay with the clarifying question?
Yeah. I think is always helpful to support our leaders and leadership. To that end, um, I, I, I'm not sure where we are with the spring retreat. So if, you know, you guys, if you want to think about how we can, uh, I, I would be absolutely supportive of, of, uh, of doing work around leadership and, you know, what might be glitches or how to improve our leadership. I don't necessarily, I think it belongs in a retreat, so I'm not sure if Laurel has, if everybody's okay with that, but I think it's always a good idea. I don't know that we'll get three votes for, to, to add it to an agenda item, but I definitely just wanted to say, I, I raised my hand and I support that we should be doing that work continually.
Um, I'm not sure about the difference, except I don't think this is something that we as a board can. I was proposing that we, we make a decision for outside support. We keep trying.
Maybe I didn't understand you. I apologize if I, if I didn't.
Okay, I, I don't know. I, well, I can't decide exactly what it looks like. I'm just saying, I mean, we should be farther along and I really want us to be farther along. And usually when that happens, that means there's a lot going on and the support needs to happen and we need to operate that as a board.
So Alicia, are you raising your hand to bring that to leadership to discuss adding that to an agenda item, as an agenda item?
It is late and I'm having a hard time understanding. And I think I went down a different path than Laurel's talking about. Laurel, can I ask another clarifying question? Are you, you in, if I'm way off, I apologize. Are you suggesting we get additional support for leadership to figure out, to move? Are you suggesting we get additional support for leadership to figure out, uh, to move things through on the agenda? Or are you, is that what you're suggesting? I'm, or are you suggesting that, well, anyway, can you help me understand?
It's not like to, specific to one thing, like, just like to move things on an agenda. Think of it in terms of like how when Andy got his role that we suggested that he have a mentor or, or somebody to work with. So that's what I would suggest.
Okay.
Realize I'm one person, so maybe it doesn't look exactly like that, it's what the board would see that it looks like.
Got it, okay.
I've seen it done at the county, at the city, at, at four J, it's a normal thing. I'm saying as a board, we are all unpaid and it's helpful.
I agree, and I, that's why I will again say, yes, I don't know where it belongs, but my original statement, which is I think we can all use, if anybody that goes into leadership can use, uh, support, so.
So is there, is there another hand or do we move on?
I, I do have a, a suggestion of how to maybe get at that from what I might be. But as you said, we're all individuals. Maybe we could ask for a timeline with things like, uh, just an idea of what the plan leadership has that would give us something to look at about setting our goals, finishing our working agreements, whatever the key things are for the board to do. And then if there's a plan, what's, we could look at that, are there supports we need? Is it, we have need to meet more, do we need some outside help? So I need, it's nebulous for me, I'd like to sort of see it and maybe request that leadership does that for the conversation, but it, you know, send it out.
I, I love that too, yeah. Maybe that's the beginning and it's, it's, I, during that conversation, it's like, yeah, like maybe more open meeting than that.
So I'm just wanting to confirm, are those hand raises from you, Judy and Alicia?
So it's map of the year, so we know what we're looking at and if we can fit everything in. And then we could have the conversation, do we need help, do we need more meetings, this, right?
So you're suggesting something a little bit different?
I am, yeah, I think Laurel was supporting that, yeah.
And I'm at leadership, so I'm feeling extra special that I'll get my way.
Uh, is there, so now that there's three over proposals, do three people want to, uh, support leadership having a conversation about, uh, mapping out the plan for the year and having that shared discussion for board leadership support and where or when that might take place? So I'm just looking for some hand raises.
So you kind, you kind of put that all in a nice little package with the bow on it, and I can support that? If that's what you were doing, or were you asking us to pick?
I was hearing different things being asked of Laurel and it sounded like she was amenable to the shift. So I don't wanna leave anybody's part off, and I also wanna make sure that it is, um.
I can't change mine to Judy's, cause I believe that's a good starting place.
Is that, and then what we, in, if you just have to say, we have, still have to do goals, working agreements, this and this. We're gonna do this this month, this month, and it would be more work.
Yeah, and that.
That might exist, you haven't seen it, so.
Yeah, we don't know.
Yeah, so that would be good. And then it could also address some Alicia's thing, well, this we can do in a retreat and we're gonna schedule it.
Absolutely.
So to get some clarity and then we'll know.
I, I think that's fair to bring to, to leadership to talk about. And there's three hand raises, so that sounds perfect. Is there anything else?
Was there a, I, I may have, I missed it somewhere, we were going to have, there was a discussion that, that I missed about having a, um, what is that called again, somebody who understands rough rules of community.
Their training?
Oh, a parliamentarian. A parliamentarian. Um, is that where, I haven't heard more on that, is that been dropped or is it coming back?
Andy, do you want to answer? Sure, from my recollection, and I don't wanna put words in anyone's mouth, the information that we had gathered at the time seemed to, as I recall, give some board members the impression that it would not, for us at that time, be as helpful as we had hoped. And it would be something that we would bring up a little bit later and.
Would not, okay. Nobody liked oversight, didn't it? Okay.
Are there any other items?
All right.
With that, the, you know, Laurel, do you still have your mic on? No? Um, I think that if you want to revisit the conversation, it's all recorded, so you can go and listen to how that.
I heard it, but it didn't, it didn't come to the decision.
Okay, it might be worth just revisiting it. Um, thank you, everyone, the meeting is adjourned at ten twenty-eight PM.